The meeting will come to order. The first order of business, excuse me, is, folks, if you can't stop talking, please leave the room, go out in the hall, and you can talk all you like. Right, the meeting will come to order. The first order of business is approval of the minutes from our August 26 meeting, which have been previously distributed to us. So if there are no changes or additions, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading.
I'll, I'll, motion to waive.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry, I thought it already happened. Next is public meeting and hearing petitions. And first on that list is case 2025-17 at 124 to 126 Pearl Street. And Juan Iago is the petitioner. So step forward, gentlemen, and describe your petition.
I'm here with my architect and structural engineer, and this is my partner, Eversa Well, last time we met, there were some recommendations that we tried to make sure that they were changed. And in fact, you know, there were questions about the size of the units, the number of And we went down from 11 residential units to nine residential units. The size of the bedrooms from all being one bedrooms, now we have three, two bedrooms and six one bedrooms. There were also suggestions about the change on the entrance of the residential units and the commercial units, and those were addressed as well. So I think we accomplished all the recommendations that were pointed out. In addition to that, we had a meeting with the Historic Commission, and they suggested certain changes to the facade of the building, which we also addressed, where there's going to be more brick on the facade of the building with a little bit of hotty plank in the middle of the building. So I think from your suggestions, we did the best we could. And they were very good suggestions. I want to thank you for those suggestions, and we're hoping that you would understand and approve our project.
Yeah, also, just want to make mention, board members have copies of the floor plans. The email just hasn't come through yet, so. But board members have copy of the floor plans. This is the plan for the design of the building. And also, board members have the document from the Historical Commission that outlines some of the comments, and then also another document that outlines the changes to the proposal and any changes to possible relief.
Okay, I had two comments last time. One was about the abutters. Did you notify the abutters? What was their, what was their feedback? And I assume you took some of the windows away that were facing the building that was several feet away from it? Have those been removed?
Those are, the windows were on, on one of the abutters. On one of the abutters, we make sure that it doesn't interfere, the windows to the view of the, of the abutter. So we addressed that as well, and that's why you see that on the, on one of the sides, the windows are more tilted to one side because it, you know, it doesn't interfere with the
Okay, and will the Historic Commission looked at that?
The Historic Commission didn't necessarily comment on like the location of the windows. They did mention trying to replicate the kind of, I don't know what the right kind of framing is, but the casing or like the trim on the outside, trying to replicate some of the buildings that are to the left of this property. So they didn't like speak to the like location of the windows, but that can still be a recommendation from the planning board. And also, you know, they came to the Historical Commission to get some design review comments. I think after they go through, you know, if you guys recommend approval and it goes to the zoning board and the zoning board approves it, if that all happens, they will still go through a design review process with the department and might need to just check back in with the commission, Historical Commission, so.
Okay, well, just a general comment about these properties in densely populated areas. I had asked for the context, to show the context around the building, the abutting buildings, but also in elevation, their windows versus your windows. We just want to know that you've given it some thought so that they're not opening their windows and looking into your building and vice versa.
Yeah, so we have given that some thought and moved the windows around as best we could to, to make sure they're not lining up with the abutters' building.
I got a question. These plans on the, the two apartments that are two bedrooms, there is literally no bathroom listed in the, in the, in the units. On the draw, on the drawings, there's no bathroom in unit 201 or 401. There's no bathrooms and there's no windows in any of, on the plans, any windows on, on the back bedrooms. Or 301. So it seems like there's no bathrooms. I understand it's a mistake, but I can't really.
This is a mistake in the plan that you have.
I assume that's what it was, but it's, it's a little odd. And there's, and the same thing with like, there's no indication of where the windows are going to be in those, in those, in the units, so I don't know what to say, but.
So pretty much.
So Juan emailed it to me, just hasn't come through yet. That's why, yeah, I only have the hard copies, so apologies for board members having to share a bit.
Just to speak on that, so in those units, there would be windows in the front, varying, as you can see in the elevations, and then on the side as well, in the living room, and on the back, there would be bad windows as well.
Juan, I can pass this along. You'll see on the elevations, the number of windows, which is a.
I can see from the drawing. I get that, but it's a little helpful. The plan, the plans are important to show details and things like that, and those are, not to have a bathroom is kind of major. I don't know how you guys could overlook not having a bathroom in a drawing plan, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is the most up to date, but we will make sure that it is corrected.
In principle, I appreciate you taking all of our, all of our, all of our suggestions, but it is challenging to recommend approval on an incomplete plan. So I'd suggest correcting the floor plans and coming back at a future point in time, or we can recommend approval under a condition, floor plans are updated at a future point in time. Either's fine, I don't care.
I'm going to recommend approval with the condition that you will submit coordinated plans, but I think you've done a nice job making it look contextual and adding brick and having a nice cornice line and appropriate windows. It's a vast improvement. Standard conditions, hold on. Okay. So the.
No, we have some proposed conditions that.
Is this what, is this the correct one? Okay, but reducing the units from 12 to nine?
No, no, no. Sorry.
Okay, so we'd like to recommend approval with the following conditions. The standard conditions, as applicable, the petitioner must submit the following plans: a lighting plan, where all lights are compliant with international dark sky standards; rodent control plan; a waste management plan; construction management plan; the petitioner must install a white roof; the petitioner shall not be permitted to place gas grills or umbrellas on the roof deck; prior to the issuance of a building permit, the petitioner must participate in design review with the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning with consideration of the comments from the Chelsea Historic Commission, and occupants will be ineligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program.
So Juan emailed it to me, just hasn't come through yet. That's why, yeah, I only have the hard copies. So apologies for board members having to share a bit.
Just to speak on that, so in those units, there would be windows in the front, varying, as you can see in the elevations, and then on the side as well, in the living room, and on the back, there would be bad windows as well.
Juan, I can pass this along. You'll see on the elevations, the number of windows, which is a-
I can see from the drawing. I, I get that, but it's a little helpful. The plan, the plans are important to show details and things like that.
Definitely.
And those are, not to have a bathroom is kind of major. I don't know how you guys could overlook not having a bathroom in a drawing plan, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is the most up to date, but we will make sure that it is corrected.
In principle, I appreciate you, you taking all of our, all of our, all of our suggestions, but it is challenging to recommend approval on an incomplete plan. So I'd suggest correcting the floor plans and coming back at a future point in time. Or we can recommend approval under a condition, floor plans are updated at a future point in time. Either's fine, I don't care.
I'm going to recommend approval with the condition that you will submit coordinated plans. But I think you've done a nice job making it look contextual and adding brick and having a nice cornice line and appropriate windows. It's a vast improvement. Standard conditions, hold on. Okay. So the- This one?
Uh, no, we have some proposed conditions that-
Is this what, is this the correct one? Okay, but reducing the units from 12 to nine?
No, no, no. Sorry.
Okay. So we'd like to recommend approval with the following conditions. The standard conditions, as applicable, the petitioner must submit the following plans: A lighting plan, where all lights are compliant with international dark sky standards. Rodent control plan, a waste management plan, construction management plan. The petitioner must install a white roof. The petitioner shall not be permitted to place gas grills or umbrellas on the roof deck. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the petitioner must participate in design review with the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning with consideration of the comments from the Chelsea Historic Commission. And occupants will be ineligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program. And a coordinated set of floor plans that match the elevations that we're seeing here.
That's a motion, yes?
That's a motion, a very long one.
I'll second it.
Aiden seconded. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Case 2025-19 at 403 to 405 Broadway. The petitioner is New Properties LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My name is James Cipuleta. My office address is 5 Fremont Street in Winthrop, and I'm the attorney for the applicant. With me is the applicant's architect, David Choi, who would like to give a brief, a brief presentation as well during the course of this. Mr. Chairman, this is an application for both a special permit to alter or extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And according to Mr. McAtier's zoning review letter, we require some dimensional relief as well as parking relief. I would like to address the latter first, to say that all of the dimensional regs and the parking deficiencies are existing now and have existed for many years. We are not creating any of these deficiencies in parking or any incursion into the dimensional setbacks. With regard to the extension of the pre-existing non-conforming structure, all of this will be done within the footprint of the existing structure. As the Planning Board may know, this is a building that houses a restaurant on the first and second floor and residential on the third floor. The residential unit is overly large, unreasonably large. So what the owner would like to do is to cut that in half and make two smaller, more reasonable units. The living space and the number of people that it would, will accommodate do not change. Everything is zero sum. All they're doing is making two smaller units, which will accommodate smaller families or couples who would be more inclined to rent those types of a unit rather than look for someone who would require a larger space. With regard to the second, second story, there's also existing now part of the restaurant use. What the owner would like to do is to build out toward the front, to square that off and increase the restaurant use. Most of that use will be for a function hall. That's essentially what it's used for now. And the use in itself will not change. He will do the same thing that he has been doing in the operation of his business. It will tie into the first floor. It will accommodate weddings, maybe other types of wedding receptions and banquets and so on and so forth, which would be a service to the city. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may David go through the, the plans for the benefit of the members.
Who's asking a question? Go through the- Oh, yeah, people in the audience.
Yes.
Of course, yes.
I, I never played an architect, so I, David will do a much better job.
Thank you very much. David Choi, 60 VFW Parkway, Revere. So this is the first floor plan, existing, no changes. This is Division Street in the back. This is Broadway in the front. Typical downtown Broadway, mixed-use entry for the restaurant, exit for the restaurant, kitchen in the Division Street side, no changes proposed. There's an existing stair that takes you to the second and third floor, third floor being the residential use, existing, no change to footprint. This is the second floor, where the owner would like to add above the existing kitchen, there's currently a roof above that kitchen. It is an underutilized function space, as is existing, and they would like to extend it to the back for the function. No change of use, just an extension on top of the existing kitchen. If you could go to the next, next page. Top of the, top of the sheet, we're, we're showing you the existing condition. 1,600 square feet, one unit on the third floor. 1,600 square feet, one unit on the third floor. We will not be changing the stair. We will not be changing the front, will not be changing the back. There is an existing fire escape in the back. We will maintain all fire safety. We'll actually extend the sprinkler system. The proposal is to add essentially a wall, bifurcating the units into a two-bedroom facing out to Broadway and a three-bedroom facing out to Division. Bathrooms as the core dividing, divided by the demising wall. Essentially, this is a 500-square-foot apartment. This is a 900-square-foot apartment, is the break. So, so right now, as it stands, this room here is a big chasm, non-functional. You can't, there are party walls on either side. It's, it's basically a big dark chasm without any function. So there is an existing wall there, and it's being used as just one, one large, disproportionately large apartment, where you have to have the windows for bedrooms on either side, so. And that's really the proposal. No, no changes to the outside unless features are to the pleasure of the board. So that's, that's really what, it's very simple proposal.
A question for you. So with respect to this plan, you're only looking to extend the second floor out and the third floor's footprint will remain as it is right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Making it safer because of the fact that there is a big chasm of a space that's not function, that doesn't have any daylight and it's not being used.
And will the entrance, the main entrance, just sort of be a split entrance of what's there now? How do you have that?
Right, so we would have the existing stair, and there will be a door to the unit on Broadway.
Landing at the top of the steps and then two doors to the respective units there?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yes.
Several questions for you. How do you plan, if you're going to use the downstairs as a function space, how do you plan to mitigate the noise for the upstairs, proposed apartments? And then in addition to that, if you're splitting the floor plan, that is the smallest three-bedroom I've ever seen in there. It's got like a giant closet in that last bedroom.
900 square feet, but yeah, in the, in the back.
The 87 square foot for a bedroom, though? I mean, who's, who's going into that, that bedroom in the plan? By the way, these plans are just hard to read because they're very, very small. The ones that we, we received was a little bit of an issue to-
Okay.
For these aging eyes, anyway, at least.
Right. Yeah, it's just by the legal, legal definition of a bedroom, by code. But to answer your question about the sound, obviously, we would work with the Building Department. You have to have STC rating of 55 or higher, using insulation in the floor assembly. But just to note that the function extension that is being proposed is outside the footprint of, of the residential use.
I did understand that, but it looks like you're converting what was one bedroom into a two-bedroom, and that the space beneath it will also continue to be used as function space. And I just had wondered about noise carried through for whoever's going to live in either of those two apartments, even though I, I know you're also working on the additional space just being function space.
Yeah, so by, by code, we have to add insulation to the floor assembly for both energy compliance and noise compliance, so it, and also fire separation. So that's, all those things were considered with the Building Department before we came. We, we don't have a, a building denial, building code denial.
One more question in regard to this plan. Is there a reason why you have put the split for the two apartments in the place? Is there supporting structures that it needs to be there, or can it be moved? That, that central wall divide between the two apartment complexes, does that, is, is it dead, is it dictated by something structural, or is it just a choice?
Actually, if you go to the, the existing plan, I just want to clarify on the existing plan, not, not, it's actually the, the other page. It's an existing wall, and we didn't want to, we're, we're trying to do the minimum possible. I mean, the next page, if you go to the, you know, oh, not, you know, you know, this is an existing, existing wall. So we're, we're trying to do the minimum possible.
That's a structural wall, you're saying? That, that wall that exists currently?
We haven't verified, we haven't done, we haven't gotten the demo permit to do that, so.
Don't know yet, okay.
Right. So, so really, at the end of the day, we're trying to be as minimal to the building code as, as, as we can, so, not to trigger any further building investigation, so.
I have a question. How big is, how many people do you think will be in the function room? Ballpark?
Well, it's going to be limited to the capacity of the building, which would be, which would have to be less than 100 because of-
Okay, so you're, you're, because if you add a function hall to a kitchen that is designed, not, I don't know, you, you're adding, you're not changing the kitchen structure at all?
No, there is going to be a new structure, structural framing above the kitchen. We're going to replace the roof structure with a new frame system.
Yes, I understand what you're doing above the kitchen. I'm talking about the kitchen. How can the kitchen function if you add another 50 people to, to a kitchen? This, this is a classic, like, you're, you're building another room, but you're not adding any more storage space, no refrigeration, no more cooking space. It's, it's like, I don't understand how the kitchen can function. That's one of my concerns, is I don't see how the kitchen can function if you add another 50 to 60 people and they all eat at the same time. That, so that's one of my questions. And the other question is, I have the same concerns that Regina has, is those, I don't, I don't, I understand that you think 1,600 feet is like the Grand Canyon up there, but I actually think you, a family of three or four or five people could easily live in a, 1,600 fair, 1,600 feet-
Yeah.
Is, you know, 500 square feet is a very small apartment for a two-bedroom, and 900 is even smaller for a three-bedroom. I think you're, I, I, I think those are just too small. Those apartments are just too small for what you want. I mean, if, if, 87, I mean, it's like a closet.
Yeah, if you could go to the other, other plan. So one of the, one of the issues is that there are demising walls here and demising walls here of another, party wall of another building and another building. So in fact, they don't have, they don't use this as a, they can't use it as a bedroom. So this here is literally a, an empty, unutilized dark area of, they, they don't, I mean, the Inspection Services does not allow them to use the 1,600 square feet that's, can't be used as a bedroom because there is no window there. So that was the, you know, so we're planning to put in bathrooms in that area, and that was the, that was the idea behind it.
Is it possible to redraw this plan, though, and come back to us with a proposal for two sets of two-bedrooms that, that they're both a little bit more balanced in terms of the use of space? It's actually lovely space, and we agree with you probably for the most part that this would make a nice, decent-sized set of two-bedrooms as opposed to a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom and divide up the space a little bit more evenly?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. My name is Luis Abedoja. Yeah, we agree, it's fine, two and two, or maybe two and a little office, that's fine for us, as long as you guys agree, we're fine. And in regards to the food, the concern of the food, what we do is like preset parties. It's not like they just come and can just order like an open menu. It's a setup menu that, you know, they prepare, they have it at the oven, and they set up people on the sides, berries, it's not like, like, they can just, anybody can order anything. It's a set, a preset-up menu. So that, that's why the banquet's upstairs, it's, it's a little bit easier to function while we serve the, the first floor.
I, I appreciate that. I get that it's a, a set menu, except you still have to store the, the ingredients for the set menu. And you, and you still have to store the plates, silverware, even if you use disposables. If you use disposables, then you're even getting more into bulk. You, you, you know, it, it's a myth to say we're just going to add another 50 seats to the restaurant and not change the back of the house. It's, it's, you're asking for a disaster for the back of the house. You're going to start storing stuff in, all over the place. Dry goods are going to be all over the place, and it's, it's, it's going to be a safety hazard in that kitchen because you're not, you have to build storage. You have to, you know, you need oven spaces, you need refrigeration. You just can't tag on another 70, like I said, 50, 60 seats and just expect, you know, the kitchen to be, you know, I'm sure they can push the food out at one time, it's that menu, but you still need, you know, where are you going to store the ingredients?
The reason to ask for that is because right now, the parties is not like, they're big, they, 100 people, they're like 50, sometimes 60. So we're trying to set up like a smaller space so it doesn't feel like it's a huge space for them. So we're trying to make a nice setup right there. That, that's pretty much what we're trying to do. But if it's required to do more storage, then we have to discuss and-
Yeah, so on this, if you go to the, the second floor, one of the, one of the reasons why Inspection Service, if you, actually, one of the reasons why in the Inspection Services, they didn't want to put seating on the plans was for that particular reason. They wanted to make sure that it's not a restaurant function, like, in other words, I mean, if we put, you know, we presented it, you know, seats, but then those exact same questions came up. And so we wanted to make sure by code, it's a safety factor, and they do have a basement for-
So the, the function hall's not going to have a table, chairs, just all going to stand around? You're going to have, there are going to be tables and chairs up there. You're going to store tables and chairs. You can talk to Inspection Services all you want and say that you're not, but unless, if, if I was going to a function space and, and I had my, you know, 80-year-old grandmother, she better have a chair for her to be able to sit, sit on. You, it's not a dance party up there. You're going to, you're people are going to, you're going to have to have buffet tables, six-foot tables, I'm sure you're going to have six-foot, eight-foot tables up there to serve the food. So again, this is all about storage and, and, and safety. And I, I, in good conscience, until I see that issue a little bit more clarified for me, I have a hard time with this.
Yeah, I think we could put a storage room for dry goods and any kind of function-related storage areas on the second floor. Yeah, that's, and also, they do have a basement for food storage as well, which, which is currently, yeah, currently licensed to operate.
And you mentioned the occupancy limit. Are we expecting the occupancy limit to increase with this? Or is it actually going to be the same as with the existing function space, which might mitigate some of your concerns if we're talking about the same number of people just in a larger space?
So occupancy is dictated by the building code. It's the area divided by 15-
So it won't go up?
Yeah, so, so in terms of what the city building- Yeah, so, so in terms of what the city building inspectional services looked at, there's, it's within the safety factor for egress and escape. And so we didn't get any, let's just say, you know, request for variance on any, any building issues. But to the board's pleasure, if additional storage would suffice on the second floor, then we'll, you know, obviously the owner is willing to consider that.
I also wanted to ask if there were any ADA compliance concerns about this. I appreciate that there's only an existing staircase to the second floor, but with these changes, was there any consideration given to putting an elevator in, so that Mimi's 80-year-old grandmother, who will have a seat, can also take an elevator up?
So that also falls within the jurisdiction of MAAB in terms of the threshold of the work limit. So we do not, according to the estimate that they put in for the building permit, did not exceed the 30% value of the cash, value of the building, and therefore, we were not obligated to do that. But there certainly will provide equal accommodation on the first accessible public floor. And that is by law, that we have to provide equal, equal function on the first floor that is equal to the second floor.
So related to this, I see some diagrams here on the screen now, and related to the kind of increased use, or at least increased space of the second floor. Could you describe the egress to this? I see several exits labeled there, but I also see the exterior circular fire escape. And if you could describe how all of that is intended to function?
So this is the main stair from the street. So this takes you down, right down to Broadway.
And is that a, to exit straight to the street?
Yes, that's currently existing.
Fully enclosed?
Right.
Okay.
So whatever I'm describing now is existing, permitted, inspectional services went through. This is also an existing stair, second means of egress. It actually takes you down, if you could scroll down to the other page. It actually, it actually, it's a bi-level. So this is at a lower level than on Division Street. Division Street is a little higher by a factor of five feet. So this is almost a landing, we put a landing. This is an existing landing that exists as a landing.
And this is the exit that exists right now? So from the second floor out to the street?
Yes, and so, so this exit actually takes you back to the exit onto Division Street, which is also existing. Nothing is proposed on the first floor.
Using what exists there with whatever improvements are needed to, you know, handle the increased load potentially, right?
So this is just the replacement of the, of the existing fire escape, just to make it more safe without encroaching on any further or making any...
And how do you get to it? I mean, is there windows? How do you access that external?
Go to the other, yeah, so if you go to the other, other plan. So, so from, yeah, from the roof of the second floor, you would then have access to that fire escape.
And that fire escape is only intended to serve the top-floor apartments, not the second-floor event space?
Right, because it is an existing, it's an existing condition of the, of the third floor. So we're making, not less conforming, if you will.
Okay, and so there's, for the second floor, the increased space with the addition, there's really only the two pre-existing egresses now planned at the moment? And is there space in there for another one? And to the points made, if we're gonna start putting a lot more people up there, then, you know, if something bad happens, we would like people to be able to get out quickly as well.
Right, so it's sprinkler building, and all the egress calculations were considered in terms of common path of travel, maximum distance allowed. All those things were considered by the building department. I think we wouldn't be here today if, you know, the building code, if it did meet the intent of the building code.
And one question about that, just what's the real number? What would the new occupancy be on that second floor, assuming the addition?
So the reason why I, I mentioned, so there's certain thresholds. So if you go over 100 in the total building, then the code actually would then make you change the hardware. There's a threshold, so it's gonna be governed by the threshold of the building code, to answer your question. So even if, she can't put in 2,000 people in there certainly, she can't put in 200.
We have a square footage.
She has her desires, but she, she's not gonna meet her desire.
Right, but we have a square footage that we have in mind here with the addition, and then there's a factor of that that ultimately gets us to our occupant. And I'm wondering, do you know what that number is as currently configured on your plan?
So, so with the building code, we, it will go over, let's say, 200, right? If you're just considering, but it's, it's not, I mean, that's, we're gonna limit the occupancy voluntarily to less than, less than 100 to not meet all the thresholds, so...
Okay, so less than 100, meaning 99, or...
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
Because beyond that, you need certain panic hardware, which I don't think they're willing to change the front of the building, or change, I mean, it's, what happens with the building code is that once you start changing, once you go over a certain threshold, then so many things have to change, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So to that point, so to the applicant, maybe for you, ma'am, if you could explain for us how you plan to police that? Because, you know, if there's two ways in, you know, it seems like it would be fairly easy to fill that space to overcapacity.
It's policed by the fire department and the building inspectional services. Every restaurant business is regulated by the occupancy posted. So we could argue, as, as, you know, like, with all the building codes, but at the end of the day, the fire safety governs the occupancy of that.
So the purpose for us is not like to bring so many people, is we're trying to make a nice space with glass, so people can just go like, no, kind of a roof deck, not really like wide open, but at least people can just go out. We don't plan to put like many tables, where it's more like a high chairs, so people can relax there. Let's say we have a party of 40 people, instead of bringing to the big room, we can just do it there, so they will feel more comfortable and closer, with a nicer view. That's the point for us.
And so my question for you is really just how do you plan to make sure that you don't go over the number that you wanna keep it at? Will you only rent that space out to certain, certain-sized parties that are private? I mean, how do you plan to control that, is my question?
Right now, we're gonna continue to do it, the way, it's pretty much for parties. That's what we do, just function for like weddings, and we set up numbers. This is the max number, nobody else can be there. So we're planning to do that, but right now, what is happening is like parties are like 30, 35. Every time it's less and less and less people. So if we can say we are okay to do, let's say, 20 people here, with, sometimes they just want an appetizer, they don't want to take the full service, because that is killing us, that's pretty much, we're just trying to see how we can survive with the restaurant, make it a nice and, and a good environment for the, for the community.
And you would just have some ability to kind of count the number of people that go up to the stairs to the second event space, and...
No, we just set up by the chairs, with the chairs is that's how we set up the number of people.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the restaurant on the, on the first floor will continue to function as today?
If, I don't know if you guys have ever visited the restaurant, but we've been working so hard to make it like more welcome to families. It changed a lot, the environment changed a lot, and we're investing a lot to try to make it nice for the community. It's been a really tough years, and this is a horrible year, with the street work, and we're just doing the best we can to keep it open. We're trying to keep the doors open.
Very good, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to propose that we, that we get some new plans, maybe with a redesign of that second floor. But otherwise, we're, I think it sounds like our board seems enthusiastic about updating this project to accommodate your business as a general whole, with the exception of just maybe reconfiguring that second floor into being a much more kind of functioning, livable space for two apartments?
Third floor, I think you meant.
Third floor, exactly.
Thank you, thank you.
Your second floor plans, yep, are fine, and did anybody have, Mimi, did you have any further comments on this?
We'll add the, we'll add the storage room. I think, I think the owner will add the storage room on the second floor.
We'd like, we'd like to continue your case to the next meeting, so that we can see some updated plans.
Okay.
And just come back before us with, with updated plans at that point in time of the new proposal for the third floor, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Do we need to make a motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, just for the petitioner who was just here, just given the fact that, you know, Thanksgiving is in November, the planning board meeting will take place on November 18th, so...
All right, the next petition is case number 2025-20 at 59 through 81 Carey Avenue. And it's on Ms. Aguero.
Hello, my name is Raquel Aguero.
I'm Roy Aguero.
I live on 90 Pinnacle Street in Tewksbury. So my father owns 59 Carey Ave. It currently consists of four units, and he wanted to add two on top, so nothing is really being changed on the size, we're just going up. A little backstory, there was a incident with fire, so basically got like cut off on top with the previous owner, so we just wanted to, I guess, restore that.
Could you describe the situation with that fire? I think that's one of the large open questions about this project, is what happened there? There's a lot, there's not much detail in any of the materials we've seen here, so could you give us the story on that whole situation?
Well, that happens too long ago, we're not, we not even know when.
You don't know how long ago it was?
No.
10 years or more?
No, more, a lot more than that, probably over than 30.
Okay. Do you know when the, the structure as it sits right now was built that way? How long has it looked the way it looks now?
No, I don't know. Well, the third floor is gonna look like the same.
Yeah, but you know like when?
When? We only have this house for seven or eight years, I think.
You bought it seven years ago? Okay, and it looked as it does right now?
Yeah.
And Will, is there any history on the, on this property that might illuminate what happened with that fire?
I mean, we can, we can look into that, but we haven't found anything. But I also don't think we necessarily have like dove into the history of the property. You can definitely gather that info.
I would like to, yeah, I think that would really instruct this board's consideration of this is to understand what was and how the current structure came to be as it sits right now. I mean, if this was partially destroyed by fire at some point, there should be some records of, around that and the reconstruction.
I venture to say, just based on the details, the projecting windows on the second floor, et cetera, that it probably looked substantially different.
Right.
Than, than the proposal. Not, not to, not knocking the proposal, I'm just saying that how bad it didn't look like that.
Are there other three-story buildings surrounding it?
Other what, I'm sorry?
Three-story buildings? If you added another level, is this gonna be the only one on the block that's as tall?
Now, we have one right next on the left side. And then, three stories, yes. Well, almost all of them.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, almost the whole street, it's three stories.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What material are you, are you planning for, are you planning for a flat roof? Or are you planning for a pitched roof for this particular property? It's not quite clear on...
Flat, it's gonna be a flat roof, yes. See, that's the one I'm talking about. And then on the other side, they have four stories.
Yeah, yeah.
Are any changes proposed to the exterior of the first and the second floor? Or is it just adding on a third floor?
We're just gonna add on it. We're just gonna go up.
So no renovation or any fixes on the current one?
No.
And did you guys make sure that's still stable enough for the new ones to go on top?
So it's, you said it's like stable enough to go on top?
Well, I think so. I think so, because it used to be, that we saw it before, so...
Yeah, but it used to be, but it was on fire before. So my concern is, you know, is it still stable to add another floor?
I think so. I'm pretty sure, yeah.
And like, ultimately, I think that's up to city inspectional services, but I'm also concerned about constructing a floor onto a building that suffered a fire. My like architectural concern, looking at some of these images, is that the first floor is a totally different exterior, like, and our second floor and our third floor is going to be something else. So I'm just kind of concerned it isn't gonna totally, totally fit in.
Will, can you show us pictures again of the existing structures in the neighborhood, so we can just kind of get a context of how this would look in relation to its neighbors?
The first floor right now, it's vinyl siding, and the second floor, it's shingle. It's old stuff, yeah.
Is the proposed cladding? What material are you proposing to clad the building with?
Well, I think we're gonna go with vinyl siding.
Okay, meaning that it'll match the first floor, so it'll be consistent?
Yeah, all the way from the, the first, all the way up to the third.
Got it, thanks.
To go back to, to the fire, do you know how many apartments were on the third floor that was burned?
Well, it should be the same, like, probably three beds up, you know, on each side. That's what we have right now, first and second floor.
Yeah, it's just hard to, to frame this without knowing what was there. That would be really helpful if you could find that out for us, how that looked prior to the fire. That'll help us really get a grasp of what, what's being asked here. Because it's clearly been this structure for some time now.
So, just on a, on a design level, I would like to see if there's a way to, if you go up another structure, another story in this building, it will substantially change the visual impact of the building in relation to the street and its neighbors. So I would like you to consider adding a parapet to the top of the building instead of it just being a flat surface. And a parapet is a, it is a, let me see if we can, Will, do you wanna help me out with what a parapet is?
The wall extends beyond the height of the roof.
And it just adds a, basically, a decorative grill to the front of the building. And it just adds a, basically a decorative grill to the front of the building at the very top of the roof line that puts you in line with some of the other buildings that have fat, flat roofs and are also three-story structures in your neighborhood. In addition to that, I personally would like you to look at, on the very first floor, at your windows that are going in, because your, your first floor and your second floor are almost identical in how they're laid out, but if there's a way to incorporate your windows so that the building looks more visually harmonious, that would really also benefit how this looks as you, for both your tenants to have more light, but also for the building to be a more harmonious fitting building onto the street and architecturally. So I don't know if that's a consideration you can make, but it certainly would, would add to the, to the overall appearance of the structure.
Is there any residents living there right now?
Residents?
Yeah.
Yes.
So how are you guys gonna manage to do that while there's residents living there?
Well, we don't know if we're gonna move the people out.
So you don't know, you don't have any plan if you're gonna relocate them?
I don't know. I don't know how he's gonna do, because we're gonna have a contractor to do that, so I don't know if he's gonna be, you know, he has to do the things safe enough for the people being there, right? If not.
But then we're also looking at, you know, a lot of, you know, noise disruption, number one, number two, it could be a safety hazard, you know, because people, you know, workers will leave and then anything can happen overnight while they're sleeping. So, I don't know.
Well, if we have to take them out, we won't take them down.
Because now that's gonna be, that's a concern for me now to those residents and ensure that they're safe at home, you know. I, you know, I think I suggest like, you know, you guys should really come up with a game plan for that.
Yeah, am I gonna have to go up?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. This is a pretty substantial project, isn't like adding a curb cut or something, and it just doesn't seem sufficiently thought through. And I'd expect seeing more architectural drawings, probably a plan changing the entire building's facade and siding, because I'm afraid that this is gonna end up looking like three different buildings stacked on top of each other. Yeah.
Just a really minor comment, the, the plans for the new third floor currently don't have closets in bedrooms two and three on the left-hand side. It's almost certainly just a mistake they're there on the right-hand side, but just, it sounds like we might be leaning towards new plans anyway, so maybe just include that correction.
Well, we're gonna have to put closets.
Yeah.
Yes, of course, yeah. Well, I probably, probably, I don't know why. He probably with the way it is for weeks.
I wanna make a proposal that we continue this, we need more detailed plans, and some amendments, we need answers, there's, I, I'm not saying no, I'm not saying yes, I don't, I'm kind of neutral on this project, but there's so many unanswered questions and about aesthetics, about changing where the residents are gonna be, a building plan, let alone all the other things, we need lighting plans. All, yeah, all I hear is like, I'll look into it, I'll look into it, but I can't honestly approve, so I would like to continue this until at least next month, and if you need more time, you can come in and ask, I don't want to vote it down, but I wanna give you guys a chance to regroup and talk to some engineers and architects and things like that and come back with a more cohesive plan. That's my proposal.
Can we just reiterate this again? So we'd like a new design plan with closets, with a proposal for how we're going to deal with the question that Christian brought up, mitigate for your tenant, your existing tenants, how you deal with them living in the building while you put in a new structure. Will your current structure support an additional unit on top? What will the new facade look and can you accommodate new design and windows in there? And come back, we would like new plans for that, come back to us, so.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And again, the November planning board meeting will be on Tuesday, November 18th.
Okay, other business is the presentation of a zoning amendment, section 34-38, special dimensional requirements. This is a public hearing. After the board has an opportunity to address any questions to the presenter, the public will have an opportunity to address the petition.
So, yeah, I, I made a presentation, but I guess, yeah, Counselor Tesh, if you.
Go ahead and, and I can speak on it, if you wanna do that.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, do you wanna give any context to the amendment first?
No, if you can do the presentation of that.
Sure. So, yeah, this, we received a zoning amendment. So it is a proposed addition to section 3478, special dimensional regulations, and this is the language of the zoning amendment, enclosed seafood processing, seafood packing and packaging, seafood loading and distribution shall not operate within 300 feet of a residential use located within the city of Chelsea limits. So then I'm just gonna go through some like, you know, impacts and considerations of the amendment. So what the amendment is essentially trying to do is to create a wider buffer between the location of proposed enclosed seafood processing facilities and any existing residential buildings, you know, trying to separate potential, potentially incompatible uses and protecting existing neighborhood character. Some other kinda considerations, you know, currently, the industrial district would be the most impacted by this potential buffer. And so, within the industrial district, this use is allowed by special permit, which does give boards and the city and residents an opportunity to ensure that any proposal that comes this way for such a use meets the neighborhood and city's needs before being approved. This kinda process does give the board discretion and flexibility to weigh the positive and negative impacts of a proposed facility to the city. This amendment isn't extended to any other industrial use that could potentially impact a nearby community, it's kinda narrowly focused on this one specific use that does also, you know, require review and public hearings to even get any sort of approval. And then just, you know, Chelsea is a small city, you know, the amendment does limit the number of industrial lots that can be used for enclosed seafood processing, which doesn't necessarily align with the city's goal to protect and welcome industrial uses. So, just, just some considerations when thinking about this amendment. And this is just a map, like a rough estimate of the possible parcels within the industrial district that could be impacted.
What color?
Sorry, the industrial district is shaded blue, the red are the parcels within the industrial district that would possibly be impacted. We didn't really have enough time to get the parcel level data, so what we did was a 300-foot buffer from residential districts, which is why this is kind of a rough estimate. If we had the parcel level data, then we could do a 300-foot buffer from any parcel that's deemed residential and probably have a much more accurate map, but this generally is, are the parcels in the industrial district that would be impacted.
Do you have a sense if there's a density, I mean, just off the, off the cuff, if there's density in those red zones? I mean, I know we don't have that parcel-by-parcel info right now, but do we have just kind of an anecdotal sense of, are these densely used lots already, or are they largely vacant?
I mean, it kinda depends on the area of the industrial district, you know. It would definitely limit the amount of vacant industrial lots that could take this particular use. So I think, you know, again, kind of along the beach and Williams corridor, you know, we see 100 Justin Drive, which was obviously right before us recently, that is currently vacant, which would not be allowed with this amendment. Along this street, I believe that, that is the KM Foods site right there, so that's obviously not vacant, so there are vacant industrial parcels where this could go into, but it definitely would limit it a little bit.
Okay, and that other stripe along to the right side there, what is that, Crescent Ave?
You're talking about this?
Yeah.
This one? No, it's not, Crescent Ave is here.
Okay.
So, I'm just. Eastern Ave runs up this way. What is that, is that Cottage? So that, this is all I have for the presentation, just some impacts of the amendment, some considerations, but Counselor, if you would like to just speak to more context on the amendment, please.
How long do I have?
However long.
Awesome, thank you. Well, you know, the reason why I proposed this amendment was mainly to amend a mistake that was made by the council. I don't wanna bore you with the, you know, dynamics of what happened in the council, who told what, you know, how it happened. The bottom line is, one of the reasons why we notify our butters whenever there is a project coming in is because we wanna find out what the input is from the people being directly impacted, right? This is the reason why whenever there's a development coming in, it's not the whole city who's notified, it's the person right next to the development. And this was the main problem that we saw, you know, when the, when the council approved this, was because we were under the impression that this was not gonna impact anybody negatively. I was one of the first people to meet with the owners of the, of Wolfish, and, and my fir-, first concern was, let's check in and make sure that the people that are next to this site would not be impacted. I was told that they would not be impacted and that nobody had complained, that's how I based my vote when I said, yes, let's allow this special permit to happen. However, when the location of the site was published and people read on the Chelsea Record that this was gonna be in, in, in 100 Justin Drive, that's when we saw dozens of people show up, I mean, there was even a petition of 700 signatures. 950 signatures.
Excuse me, Counsel, we, we don't need a history lesson on this, we've had multiple meetings about this, and the also, just so you know, they did contact the owner of the building, not the resident of the building. So I am, I appreciate this, but can I, can we speed this along, because I definitely do not wanna listen to the history of this proposal again. Thank you.
That's totally fine, I wanna be respectful of your time, but I also wanna make sure that I feel that I have laid out the testimony as to why I put this amendment forth. And, you know, now you look around you, a lot of, I would say 99% of the people that come in support of this amendment are people that are directly impacted by this project. And one of the other things, I don't wanna mislead you, this does not mean that Chelsea does not like industrial business in Chelsea, because you can see that we've zoned a very vast portion of the city of Chelsea just for industrial use. You know, that accounts for almost 30% of the available land in a two-square-mile city. And so the impact, you know, that this can have is, is very strong and very severe, and so, you know, when we look at the, the ability that we have to be able to do something and protect residents that are speaking now and saying, hey, you know what, maybe this is not a good idea for us, that is exactly the responsibility why residents are assigned to the planning board. I don't wanna be the one to tell you what your job is, I think all of you are very knowledgeable about what your job is, and all I'm doing here is essentially presenting, you know, what came before me, why I'm putting this forth, and why I believe that, you know, it's all about transparency, right? A lot of people did not get noticed that this was gonna happen, but when they did, they did show up and they did voice their opinions, and that's the reason why we're here, it's been a couple of months already. And so, again, I don't wanna bore you with the history, but one of the things that I do wanna, you know, let you know is, this is an election year. This is not in my district, meaning these voters are not gonna vote for me. I don't have any interest in making sure that this happens, other than making sure that we do have a transparent and responsible, and responsible government, because multiple counselors voiced their concerns that they were lied to whenever, when they voted to approve this. And I'm saying, if this had gone through the proper channels and it had been approved at the time properly and everybody was properly notified, I would have no trouble and I would have had no concern in taking the vote. But it did not feel good after I took it and find out that the folks that were gonna be impacted by this did not support it. And so, the reason why I mentioned that it's an election year is because I've been door-knocking through the whole city for six years straight in different campaigns, and one of the reasons why people did not vote is because they have lost the faith in local government because they feel they are never listened to, and so.
Uh, excuse me, Counsel, thanks for your input, but I, I believe we have been studying this issue for some time, going back to the spring, but.
Yes.
But I appreciate your input, I understand what you're saying, but I think we already have the message.
Yes, I will just finish by a quick statement. And so, you know, when, when it comes to the impact that the decisions that the local government has, you know, when you have people that show up in numbers and they are still not listened to, that's a direct discouragement of voters. We just had a video of the city manager saying, hey, we should encourage people to go out to vote, and I totally agree with that, but if the local government is not willing to listen to the people when they come out, why would anybody come in to these meetings? That's the only thought that I wanna leave you with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Or comments about the?
I'll ask a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so was any consideration put into including actual polluting industries? So, including fuel storage at that same site, totally fine, and electrical substation, totally fine, salt storage, fine, scrap yard, totally fine. It just like seems odd that our proposal is targeting a specific industry, actually a, a, yeah, a specific industry that isn't a polluting industry, because that's totally fair here. I, fish, plenty of, plenty of us eat fish. Fish is the industry, it isn't polluting, it isn't impacting public health. Like, I think that this is a fantastic idea in principle, to protect us against other actual industries, like, that are causing problems for people in Chelsea.
And to that end, I have some reservations about it myself, and largely just because of the scope, you know, I think one of the things, you know, it's obvious that we're all talking about a particular situation here, and that was the impetus for this, for this proposed addition on some level, and so I think the thing that gives me some pause here is that this feels not data-driven, and so I understand what the impact would be to Admiral's Hill, but, you know, there's some open questions about what the impact would be to the other areas of the city that are designated a red, and to your point, Councilman, it's, it's a small city, and so it's a non-negligible amount of space and property owners that are now essentially being forced, that are forced to have a new encumbrance on their property. And so I think that, you know, this is something that shouldn't be dismissed out of hand, you know, the democratic process is valuable, I think we should all continue to embrace it, but one thing that I think we should also do is make measured decisions based on facts and not emotions.
Okay, there's, in addition to that, there's, there's problems with the wording of this proposal for start. One of them. One of them, when you read this proposal, it, it alone would preclude fishermen from offloading their fish off the pier in, in any of our Chelsea locations where there are boats, the way this is currently worded. It says loading and seafood loading would be excluded within this, which makes no sense at all. In addition to this, there's an aspect of this that is, really calls into question the sort of impartiality of the entire zoning process. Because it's essentially, it, it's essentially putting into place to deny one particular business a, a right to exist within this city. And if the councillors did not do their due diligence on doing, on researching this project and looking into it, attending the meetings, reading the packets that were, were distributed about this business, that's a different problem than wanting to outright ban it, you know, create, create a zoning amendment that basically doesn't allow an entire business proposal to exist. The other issue we have is that the, and Will can speak to this a little bit more. In the original proposals that we received as a planning board, there were various different pieces that had to come before us that were all legally enacted. So this question of, of it being unfair, nobody receiving notice, that's just blatantly untrue. And you can see that in the filings and documents that are on file with the city. It's, it, it's always problematic when there's a project that goes in that makes people unhappy. There's no question that residents have a right to speak about that and voice their concerns and complaints and hear it out. But our job as a board is to look at this as impartially as we can and rule on it on the merits that we receive and in terms of how, whether they have met the requirements that's asked of them to receive their special permits or their zoning amendments. That's what I have to say on that so far.
Could I have some clarity on the 300 feet? Is that from the, the border of the parcel? Or is that from where that activity is taking place on the parcel?
It's from the property line. So any residential use, it's 300 feet from their property line that this seafood processing use would not be allowed.
And if it, so any parcel that that 300-foot setback hits, the whole parcel's out. It can't be, like, say there's a 10-acre site, for instance, that really, you know, limits the possibilities within these larger parcels where they could potentially have the use on one side of their land. Does that make sense? I just think we need to clarify that language.
Yeah, from my understanding, the, the parcel, like, if any part of the parcel, like, touches it, this 300-foot buffer, then this use would not be allowed if this amendment were to pass. And again, just to remind the board, the board is making a recommendation to council.
And a similar clarity on residential use. So that's, so we're not saying by a residential district. So if there was a residential site that was located by, you know, variance or whatnot outside of a residential district, that would be further limiting.
Yeah, yeah, this is a residential use. The map I showed was, I didn't mean to actually show. We made it, it was kind of quick, and it was a rough estimate, but we own, we didn't have the parcel-level data, so we did a 300-foot buffer from a residential district. But there can be residential uses outside of residential districts that have been grandfathered in.
Really even know what the real parameters of this are right now. You know, given the information we've got in front of us right here, right now, we don't really even know what the true impact of this would be if passed at the moment due to the lack of that information about parcels impacted, correct?
Yeah, yeah, in a sense, yes. I mean, we can definitely track that data down and do it, we just...
Not before a vote tonight, though, right?
Definitely, yeah, no, not before a vote tonight.
And then my other question is, being relatively new to the, the planning board, is that I was looking through our existing zoning ordinances and regulations to see if we have other similar types of buffer zones. And I could not find any, which makes this feel even more targeted. It would be one thing if this were, you know, one new buffer zone and we already had, you know, 3, 10, 15, whatever. But as far as I could tell, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, they, they don't really exist, these kinds of buffers in Chelsea currently.
That's pretty accurate.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a buffer for indoor commercial recreation, theaters, concert halls, and cinemas, 25-foot buffer between those uses and property uses or property zone for residential purposes.
Okay, so not only this increase from one to two, it's what, 12? Don't, don't make me do, don't make me do math. But 300 is much bigger than 25.
For practical purposes, any change is going to apply to any future proposals? Are any changes applied today applied to prior applications or prior appeals?
No, if this were to pass, if there was a seafood processing facility currently existing, they would be grandfathered in, from my understanding. And so, but if, you know, they, if any parcel wanted to, you know, change their use to this and they were within that 300-foot buffer, then they would not be allowed.
Yeah, so I'm just going to express that question in a clear fashion. The petition for, for Wolfish came in front of us earlier summer. Everything transpired. And as I understand it, they filed an appeal.
Yes, they have appealed the zoning board's decision.
So is any change to 3478 going to impact that active appeal process?
So this is something that I'm still trying to understand myself. I believe that when you make an appeal, you're appealing a decision which locks itself into the existing regulations at the time. So, to be honest, I'm not quite sure if this, if this were to pass, how that would impact the appeal process, but I lean towards thinking that it wouldn't necessarily impact it because the appeal is done within the currently existing zoning regulations.
I'm particularly afraid of taking action today targeting an active petitioner, as I don't think it's appropriate. And I think any decision should be made to improve Chelsea as a whole, not attack a particular party. And also, I'd, I'd absolutely ask city council to actually think it through and add actual polluting industries. Because this is just extremely narrow-minded.
So are we in a position where we need to vote straight up or down tonight? Or can we give the option of a continuance to see this, you know, potentially redrafted in some fashion? Or to collect some of that information that would be helpful to instruct us tonight? You know, in terms of what the real list of properties impacted would be citywide?
I think in order to change this amendment, we would have to vote it down and send it back for, for re, for re, to, to be changed.
Yeah, I mean, there are statutory time requirements that we need to meet. I, I like don't know off the top of my head. Like, I have the piece of paper in my, on my desk that I could run back and grab. So, so yeah, but I'm honestly not quite sure. I know John De Priest is watching right now, and I see his bubbles typing, so I'm kind of hoping he can send me an answer. Hand up, just to be honest.
So that being said, and I mean, I think as written and with the information that we have right now, I'd like to make a motion that we do not recommend this because we simply just don't have proper information to evaluate this in a sober way. You know, further efforts in this direction are certainly welcome, of course. But, you know, at this particular moment, on the facts we have right here, I can't get comfortable with this.
So John, John just messaged me saying Regina is correct in what you said. This is a public hearing, though, and so the public does have the right to comment. So I think before we make a decision, I do think it would be useful to hear the public.
Indeed, absolutely.
You withdrawing your motion?
Withdrawn the motion.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Tuck, Tuck, can, can we have, have it read about the buffer zoning? The pluses and minuses of that?
Sure, yeah.
Will, would you do that?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, planning board member Regina Taylor submitted this document to the board. Board members have this document in hand. So when and how buffer zoning can be negative. When it is used to block development. Local residents or politicians may use buffer zoning strategically to prevent new projects. Residents might demand large buffer zones between their homes and propose affordable housing, schools, or businesses, effectively blocking development. You know, a form of NIMBYism, not in my backyard. In these cases, buffer zoning becomes a tool for exclusion rather than protection. Another moment that can be negative is when it wastes valuable land. In areas where land is scarce or expensive, large buffer zones can consume land that could otherwise be used for housing, parks, or commercial space, increase urban sprawl by spreading development further apart, and lead to inefficient infrastructure such as longer roads, more utilities. So excessive buffering can make cities less compact and more costly to maintain. When it creates barriers instead of transitions. So sometimes buffer zones become physical or psychological barriers. For example, a wide strip of unused land or a dense tree line can isolate neighborhoods instead of integrating them. This can reduce walkability and limit community interaction, which goes against modern kind of mixed-use or smart growth planning goals. Number four, when it reduces economic vitality. Overbuffering can separate complementary land uses that would actually benefit from proximity. For instance, isolating commercial zones from residential areas can actually make small businesses less accessible. Separating offices and housing too much increases commute times and car dependence. Number five, when it reinforces segregation. Historically, buffer zones have sometimes been used to separate communities by race, income, or social class rather than just by land use. For example, mid, in the mid-20th century, US planning, buffer zones were sometimes placed between white minority neighborhoods to maintain segregation under the guise of protecting property values. This misuse contributed to social and economic inequality and spatial segregation that persisted for generations. And then when it damages environmental or cultural resources. So poorly planned buffers can disrupt natural habitats. You know, you know, when manicured landscapes replace wild buffers or remove historically or culturally significant land in the name of neutral zoning. So not all green buffers can be environmentally friendly. So these are just some of the instances of when buffer zoning can have a negative impact. I also have two letters submitted by the public, if you don't mind me reading them. So we have a letter supporting the amendment from Yasemin Almarib. So I'll read it. Dear Planning Board Members, we, Yasemin Almarib, Mumen Alshar, and Arson Yazan Alshar, residents of 160 Kamaraun Sway in Chelsea, are writing to express our strong support for the proposed amendment to section 3478 of the zoning ordinance. This amendment is a positive step toward protecting the interests of Chelsea residents and ensuring thoughtful community-centered development. It reflects a commitment to preserving the character of our neighborhoods while promoting responsible growth. This amendment also supports the broader goals of Chelsea's master planning process, which aims to guide sustainable growth, improve transportation safety, and promote housing that reflects the diversity of our community. We appreciate the board's commitment to public engagement and inclusive planning, and we believe this amendment reflects those values. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Yasemin Almarib, Mumen Alshar, and Yazan Alshar. Also received a letter opposing the zoning amendment. Dear Honorable Members of the Planning Board, my name is Damali Vido, and I was an activist turned four-term city councillor-at-large and stepped down in 2023 to put my activist hat back on. I'm a property owner in Chelsea and am still very connected to the community. The reason for my letter today is to speak against item zoning amendment 25, or 2025-02, RE, an amendment submitted by councillor Manuel Tesch that, that would prohibit enclosed seafood industries operating within 300 feet of a residential use. I have followed the Wolfish saga from beginning to end, and there are several reasons why I don't support this initiative, and I'd like to share a few. First and foremost, the proposed ordinance prohibiting seafood operations within 300 feet of any residential area may sound reasonable in theory, but in practice, it's unrealistic for a city like Chelsea. We are the smallest city in the Commonwealth and second densely populated in the state. Nearly every industrial or commercial area is within close proximity to housing. Beyond the zoning implications, this poorly thought-out plan would have serious consequences from an economical perspective. It would disallow local job creation, discourage business investment into our community, and increase costs for local restaurants that rely on nearby seafood suppliers. Those added costs trickle down to residents and consumers, the people that we should be aiming to support. Most importantly, it is highly inappropriate for any councillor to impede with due process and the respective duties of our volunteer boards. Wolfish was seeking to locate in a properly-zoned industrial area consistent with existing regulations. Nevertheless, orders submitted by councillor Tesch in the 11th hour disrupted the integrity of the process, and unfortunately, the zoning board buckled under political pressure. Since I served as councillor, I have warned the boards that they are the only buffer that exists to protect Chelsea residents from the same tactics that led us into receivership. We are at a time where we need to stand firm in our values, adhere to the rules and regulations, and make decisions with integrity as we were all sworn in to do. Furthermore, subsequent efforts to codify a citywide zoning change in response to this single case set a concerning precedent. Zoning policy should be deliberate, comprehensive, data-driven, and not politically motivated. We are long past the days where one small group dictate what's best for the rest of us. The efforts by the author of the matter, along with his cronies, were advantageous and guided by blind political ambition. Quite frankly, it is an interference with the day-to-day operations and the responsibilities of our volunteer boards. The residents of Chelsea deserve economic development policies that are fair, strategic, and rooted in reality, not reactionary measures made during election season. Thank you for taking the time to read my letter, and I hope you consider it when dealing with this particular case. Also, I appreciate your service to our community and recognize that being in your role is uneasy feat. What should be simple is in considering the residents of our community and what's in the best interest for us all. Respectfully, Damali Vido. End of the public letters, so we can move to public comment.
Any other comments by board members? Nope, okay. All right, we'll open the meeting to the public. As always, I ask that you keep your comments as terse and pithy as you can. Secondly, I remind what you probably know already, and that is that your comments should be directed specifically at this proposal for an amendment to our zoning regulations. This is not the time to, well, you know what, it's not the time to do. So if you'd like to speak, first of all, how many would like to speak? Okay. As I say, as terse and pithy as possible, that means as brief as possible. I'll let you self-select yourselves, because it's almost a whole audience. So anybody who wants to come up and start, that's your...
A quick request.
You should put like an actual, yeah, time on it.
Our time limit is...
How about like three minutes, two minutes?
The time limit is four minutes unless you have special permission from the board. First person.
Also a reminder to clearly state your name and address.
Oh, yes, name and address is required.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Merlene Jennings, and I live at 33 Brickwater Drive for the past 26 years with my husband Jerry. During that time, I've been very active on a lot of different boards in Chelsea. And I've worked very hard to be a person for all of Chelsea. I'm going to read you what I wrote. Some of it is duplicating, sorry, Mimi. But this is important to all of us here that are, have been working since January, really, at, at the expense of our health, to try and stop this. Over the years, I've met many of our city, long-term city councillors, leaders, and city manager. I have donated to their elections and voted for them, trusted them, and always thought they had the best intentions for the entire city. In January 2025, I wrote to city manager and councillor-at-large Leo Robinson in response to a front-page article in the Chelsea Record. This was the first time I had heard or seen anything about a seafood processing plant that would be going into 100 Justin Drive. I notified them immediately and questioned their decision. The city manager was happy to speak with me, wanting to hear my concerns, all the while writing letters of supp... while writing letters of support to city council, different boards, setting it up as if it was a done deal. We coordinated a community Zoom meeting. There were 65 members, residents, neighbors, that were on this call with the city manager and one of the owners of Wolf's Fish. There was not one person on that call that wanted this particular type of business in this residential area. Didn't mean we didn't want it. We want it in someone else's neighborhood. We didn't want it in our neighborhood. We didn't realize the impact that that statement would have because it had nothing to do with, oh, not in my neighborhood, but in your neighborhood, it's okay. That wasn't what we meant at all. We knew that there were different zones in the city of Chelsea that would be able to accommodate the amount of trucks, the pollution, the noise that we did not want to have in a residential community. Again and again, we expressed our dismay, our concerns, our lack of telling us this started last spring in 2024, and no one said anything to us, not the city manager, not the councillor-at-large, and worst of all, our district eight councillor. Not one word. So we were blindsided in January when we read this in the newspaper. That is not procedure. That is wrong. I share this with you this evening because I believe, as you probably have your own story to tell about this, you were not provided with the full and accurate picture. It is not what you were told. It was what you were not told. And likely, you two trusted our city manager and our city-at-large person and other people on the city council. Recently, several city councillors have had the integrity to stand up, step forward, and stand up to right this wrong. I have regained trust and confidence in these new city council members, Manuel Tesche, Melinda Vega, Kelly Garcia, and Tanari Garcia. I am grateful for their strength of character and sense of duty. Tonight, we are here to ask you to stand with these city councillors and your fellow Chelsea residents. This is about adopting a zoning amendment for the benefit of all of Chelsea. This amendment is not just for Admirals Hill. This is an amendment for every single neighborhood in the city that could be potentially harmed by different problems. I'm almost done, sir. I'm almost done. And this will be... Thank you very much.
Also, I'll throw up a one when you have a minute left.
I beg your pardon?
I'll throw up a one when you have a minute left to speak.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Jennings, and I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea with my wife Marlene. We've lived there for over 26 years. I've served on a variety of my neighborhood associations. It was nearly a year ago in December 2024, on the 17th of December, that this board heard a request for a zoning amendment, at that time, a zoning amendment to allow seafood processing in Chelsea's industrial zones. At that meeting, Boston Provisions, owners of Wolf's Fish, gave a short oral presentation and fielded questions about their business. The company needed that amendment to operate its business in the proposed location, which was only referred to as the former Signature Bread Facility. There was no mention that it was situated adjacent to a densely populated neighborhood. A city councillor-at-large was present at that meeting, and he spoke in favor of that amendment. Only one member of the public was present that evening, and she voiced concern several times that there wasn't enough community input. Yet, the planning board immediately voted to recommend adoption of the amendment to allow seafood processing by special permit. Community input most certainly would have been voiced had there had been adequate notice served to the butters and neighbors. Moreover, there was no communication to the affected constituents of the district by their city councillor. As you know, over the past year, there have been a number of hearings held. Many citizens voiced a host of rational and factual concerns and objection to a seafood processing facility at 100 Justin's Drive. These objections were ignored, and the planning board voted to recommend approval of a special permit. Eventually, the massive public outcry caught the attention of several city councillors who listened to the concerns raised. In response, they supported the citizens' opposition, and councillor Tesche drafted this zoning amendment, which we're discussing tonight, requiring a 300-foot buffer between any seafood processing facility and a residential neighborhood anywhere in the city of Chelsea. This amendment preserves both economic opportunity and the rights of all Chelsea residents in all neighborhoods. On September 8, the city council unanimously approved councillor Tesche's proposed amendment to be sent here to the planning board for review and recommendation. On September 9, councillor Tesche, several of his colleagues, and many citizens spoke in opposition to the fish plant at the zoning board of appeals, and as you know, the ZBA ultimately denied the application. I know this planning board has the best interests of all Chelsea at heart, and this amendment balances economic opportunity and residential needs. I urge you to support councillor Tesche's amendment, and it's good for all of Chelsea. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Perry, and I live at 160 Commandant's Way. I'm here to support councillor Tesche's proposal that a buffer zone separate any future industry like a fish plant from any residential housing in the city of Chelsea. By passing the councillor's proposal, the city of Chelsea will eliminate the possibility of any other neighborhood having to go through what I and my neighbors have experienced in the last several months. As to the letter, the certified letter that should have preceded all of this, I have talked to the manager of Axis. I have talked to the owner of Leonard Florence. They are directly across the street and adjacent. No one received a letter. If anyone can find that letter and show it to us, I would like to see it. There was no letter. So in spite of this, the zoning change proposal moved forward, approved by the city councillor under the misleading assurance that the neighbors were on board. Especially, I think, important to look at this outside of the fact that Axis is very, very close and would experience this 24/7 company constantly with trucks and noise. Aside from that, the residents of Leonard Florence showed up at every single meeting in their wheelchairs to talk about the dangers of those trucks moving in and out of that space directly where they ride their wheelchairs. Over and over again, we heard from the city and the city councillor that the promised 25 jobs a year for three years from this company were the only thing that mattered. Nothing else mattered. The implication was clear that we, as residents, didn't count. Our opinion didn't count. This was all about 25 jobs a year for three years. Councillor Tesche's proposal recognizes that all neighborhoods in Chelsea should be safe from such an industry setting up shop in close proximity to people's homes. In my opinion, both the city manager and the city council can and should do a better job in working with the people in Chelsea and all the neighborhoods of Chelsea in making better decisions for the future of Chelsea. I thank councillor Tesche for his proposal, and this proposal is one step in that direction. We need to work together. We live here. We count. Thank you.
I would like to say that so far, everyone has talked well because I also did not have any idea that you were bringing this into my neighborhood. I didn't hear about it till April, and since April, we have had... Jane Emerson, 50 Boatswain's Way. So far, we have had over 977 people sign the petitions that were started in April. We've also had over 500 people attend these meetings, and I don't feel like we're being listened to right now because we're talking about a very tightly packed area. We've got the Axis apartment building is 265 feet away from the doors of where this fish factory is going to go. It's not only just a fish factory that we're talking about. We are talking about a butchery as well. So from there, we also have the Jewish Life Center, and that is a mere 500 feet from the doors of that. There's a Jewish Life Center and the ALS Center, which is a world-renowned ALS center and the biggest one in the world as well. And those patients are wheelchair-bound, as we've already talked about. We have the Walk on the Hill, there was 700 residents again this year. And then, you know what? I think the primary thing we should be talking about is our Chelsea's master plan. Okay, so the whole premise there is the fact that Fidel, it's the first comprehensive one we had in 50 years, since 1970. I would like to point out that Admiral's Hill is part of a master plan. That was after the fire, the great fire in Chelsea, when the city and the developers got together and they laid out what the hill was going to look like. Okay? You can see what happened. And also, part of that was they dedicated the Mary O'Malley Park as well as the River's Island End Park, which is very quaint, very historical in nature. And so those were dedicated as well. So a very well-planned site, which is something that we are doing for Chelsea right now with the master plan. So according to Fidel, it's been more than 50 years, and we want to hear from our residents, businesses, and other stakeholders about what is needed to keep Chelsea thriving and moving forward. That is why we are collecting community input to develop this plan. This is the plan, moving forward, Chelsea Plan, in our city manager's words. We recognize the city needs to hear from our residents, businesses, and other stakeholders. That's why we are collecting community inputs to the plan, a document of our prioritization and how we make decisions that reflect our values and vision. We need to have a shared, community-centered, unifying vision to guide us. Now, with that, keep in mind that Chelsea is one of the smallest cities, like I think the third smallest city in the state, but we have 2.2 miles as circumference. In that, we have one more minute? Okay, great, move on. Okay, so this is once again Fidel. Let's make sure that every corner and every neighborhood of Chelsea sees ourselves in this plan. And finally, the city of Chelsea is working to make our streets safer for everyone, and we are talking about a truck every nine minutes into a parking lot where the corner of the Axis apartment building is less than 25 feet from that entrance. This requires an all-of-Chelsea effort, including learning from residents and how unsafe streets impact our lives. Get back to the wheelchair people, two of whom have attended three meetings with caretakers to bring them up. That's the effort that they made to be here. Where would we like to see improvements, whether walking, driving, or using transit? And Senator D. Domenico, at his April meeting with the Chelsea... Okay, I gotta go quickly. He talked about how we're going to have the biggest infrastructure of the MBTA coming into this area. We believe that... Just one more time. We believe in a future of zero traffic deaths and eliminating serious crash and pedestrian deaths. We need your help. That is our city manager. Thank you.
All right, can I chime in on something? I emphasized earlier, I'm afraid of targeting a specific petitioner and a specific application because this isn't about a specific petitioner or application. And every single person is focusing on a specific site, a specific group of people. This is about focusing on Chelsea as a whole. We shouldn't be talking about Axis. We shouldn't be talking about the Jewish Life Center. It's totally inappropriate in this current conversation. So let's keep it broad, please.
I think, my name is Craig Murphy. I'm at 50 Boatswain's Way. I think, actually, I think you have a good point. I really do. But I don't understand why... You brought up the salt piles. Maybe there would be a salt pile there. You brought up some other dirty industries that could be put there, and I understand all of that. But I think we trust that the planning board, the councillors, and zoning would no longer be looking at Chelsea in the past but looking at Chelsea in the future, to look at Chelsea that we don't want to be polluted air and we don't want all these types of industries that are obviously not too good for Chelsea. But here comes BP. Here comes BP with their little ideas of like a couple hundred jobs or whatever, and for some reason, the councils at the beginning, the zoning board, you folks, all decided to jump on board with this. This, what Manuel Tesche is bringing up, is to protect us from this particular type of group. It meant so much to you guys that the zoning was being changed to stick them in the neighborhood industry area, and not just ours. It could have been any neighborhood. It really could have been anyone. So you're right, this is going against a particular industry, but rightfully so. Rightfully so. Because this industry, for some reason, is being jammed down into a neighborhood that should not have it. That's all this is really about. And finally, the zoning board... And you guys all saw the, probably, the zoning board meeting. All of a sudden, there was a gentleman over here who paused and finally said no to BP. And I think it just was all about that he finally heard all of the collective voices in all the previous meetings. We never understood why you folks liked BP so much because it was places where they could have been. It was never about to hurt them. It was about they don't belong in a neighborhood, ours or anybody else's. They just didn't belong there. I go to crunch in Malden. There's a Chinese Super 88 market. It has one loading dock. If the wind is going the wrong way, it is absolutely disgusting. There's going to be 21 loading docks in this, that they said there was only going to be 2150 trucks going. I understand, I don't want to litigate the past, but it does matter. The past does matter because nobody was listening to this. That's why this keeps happening. You are right, sir. You are right, but we need to be protected from this because there is no other protection for it. There was a zoning that was being shoved down our throat. This industry was being shoved down our throat. Manuel Tesche is correct. We do need to support him, please, and the other councillors are supported. Thank you so much.
My name is Jennifer Hassel. I live at 131 Orange Street, and I oppose this amendment. I oppose this amendment because I have concerns, and I feel that there are already procedures and policies in place that will help protect us where this amendment does not have to be passed. We need to be responsible, and what that responsibility is, you know, making sure that we are appealing to all types of businesses. And so for me, I think that, you know, already having these processes in place is what's going to protect us. We don't need this. We already have struggling businesses in our community. We've seen our downtown corridor. It is a ghost town. We need things that are going to help these struggling businesses right now, and bringing bigger box companies into the community are going to help those businesses. They're also going to help the community-based organizations that are always knocking on our business owners' doors, asking for help, asking for donations. Most of the businesses in the community have been tapped out. We need new businesses in the community to help support our community and help support our community-based organizations. This particular area is already zoned for industrial. We've already gotten all of this. As you so kindly pointed out, this seems personal, and we need to not make... As you so kindly pointed out, this seems personal, and we need to not make it personal. Some of my best friends live in Admirals Hill. I respect the tenants that live in Admirals Hill, the residents, the homeowners. So this isn't, this isn't anything personal. But at the end of the day, you live on a waterfront. At low tide, what exactly is the aroma up there? Right? So that's, that's another thing to bring up. And as far as an election year, this has nothing to do with an election year. This has nothing to do with politics. This has to do with the quality of life. Right? And so the big-box companies that come in, we had an elected official actually say, we don't need another manufacturing job in the city. This is more than just a manufacturing job. These companies come in with the human resources department, with the purchasing department, marketing, sales. It's not just a manufacturing job. So I take, I take offense to that. I'm a 53-year resident of this community. I'm a product of Chelsea and Chelsea School System. There was a company here called Nancy Sales Company. They were here for 75 years. The Brennan and the Lipkin family, they hired me at the age of 17 as a file clerk. When I left there at 27, I was the assistant to the president of the company. So I'm sorry. These big-box companies are needed in this community. It's not just about a manufacturing job. It's about giving opportunities to other kids in this community that are graduating our high school that might not be able to go to college. They deserve to have a good-paying job. They deserve to have an internship. And it's not just about a manufacturing plant. And again, I have all the respect for my neighbors and my friends that live in Admirals Hill. I completely understand. But I think we're clouding things just a little bit. And we do need to stick to the facts. And the fact is that whether it's Boston Provisions or any other company, we need these companies to come to Chelsea. And we, we can't pick and choose what we want where. Let's be fair. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Eddie Gaffney. I live 100 Commons Way. Thank you all for the time to speak tonight. I support this amendment. Let's see here. I'll try not to repeat myself, and I'll be as brief as possible. Since the end of last year, 2024, the major zoning change was flawed from the start. The fact that Chelsea already has properly zoned areas for seafood facility without the need of a special permit makes it extremely difficult for me to understand why the reason was to change the original zoning for the entire industrial district in order to fit this one industry at this one lot. And as you all know, this is a divided lot where it's clearly a unique lot, and this should never have been allowed. Also, this is a clear, in my mind, example of spot zoning back in 2024. I'm gonna read you guys a definition of spot zoning. It states, "Convention meaning of spot zoning is a process of focusing on a small section of land to be used in a completely different fashion than the surrounding land for the sole benefit of the landowner and the disadvantage of the nearby landowners. For this reason, spot zoning is considered the opposite of planned zoning." I physically walked around many hours and spoke to not only residences around Admiral's Hill and Beecham Street, but the industries too. The industrial owners, the business owners, do not want the seafood in the industrial zone. There's someone here tonight who is in that area, and she will say she does not want this in this zone. She is a business owner. So my, my whole thing is, I, we want, I'm all for bringing BP and seafood places to Chelsea. The thing is, we already have properly zoned areas for this. If you put up the map, in the map there, all the, all the area in the blue, it's already properly zoned. BP doesn't even need a special permit for that. There's actually buildings in open land there, ready for them to use. So I really don't understand why this is forced into this location. As you can see from the map, the red lines, which Will did as well. In other previous meetings in this room that happened, I was, I was happy to hear with the La Plant Master Plan and the Welsh, and the West Chelsea Overly District, everyone realized that the economic development opportunity for Chelsea should be increased from the Market Basket Plaza all the way to Mary O'Malley Park in Admirals Hill. In conclusion, I ask that you please approve this order. Sorry, hold on a second. The, to comment on there, if you pull up the map again, sorry, the, the wording in the amendment, you said something about offloading and whatever. The, there's no industrial zone that has water next to it. So that doesn't really apply, like, again, it goes back to the whole blue area and the Port Authority. Those are the areas where this is allowed, and this is where it should be. It's already zoned for this. And like a lot of people said, this was never just our fight. You know, we're fighting for all the departments, all the, all the residential districts in Chelsea and the industrial districts, because a lot of people did not want this, even though they were afraid to speak up against it. Thank you.
Sir, just to clarify, the, the zone that we're talking about, that's specifically where the Signature Brads is, does have a fish, a pier down there where boats come in and out?
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
But you're saying at Justin Drive?
There's a pier down there where boats are loaded in and out.
Yeah, that's a marina. It's a marina dock. So, but that's, that's a different property, and they would not be allowed to use that unless the marina granted them access. And I don't think that's allowed per the marina zoning.
My point is just that this, this new, this new proposed amendment basically would cover into the marina area because it's a 300-feet buffer. So it would affect actually that area as well.
Yeah, and there's residences above the marina as well. So there's a bunch of residences above the marina. So that would be a residential kind of mixed-use development as well. So that would not work there either. So.
Would I be able to speak just to that? Because I know I already spoke for like 30 seconds. Because I, I'm an owner of a slip at that marina. Excuse me. I, I'm an owner of one of the slips at that marina. So I have specific knowledge of what she's asking about. It's 30 seconds. So again, I'm Craig Murphy, 50 Boats Swains Way. I do own a slip at that marina. I'm a long-term leaseholder right there. And commercial fishing is just absolutely not allowed there. Pretty much almost any kind of commercial stuff is just absolutely not allowed at that marina.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cynthia Passione, and I live at 50 Boats Swains Way. And as a side note, I'm also a business owner on Market Street in Chelsea, right outside the New England Produce Center. And none of us on Market Street ever got a letter about this proposed seafood plan. But anyways, in considering the seafood processing zoning amendment, I'd like to present a few examples of businesses that successfully operate in our midst without adversely impacting residents. This is all about, as everybody has said, location. First is the Paul Marks Company, and I'm mentioning him because it was mentioned at a previous zoning board meeting as having no impact on neighborhoods. Even though he's in Everett, he's right across the water, the island creek. He's located in a heavily industrial area surrounded by Shapiro Produce, a cold storage facility, beer distributors, and Amazon. There is no residential neighborhood within 300 feet of his operation. Furthermore, he doesn't fillet or eviscerate fish. Second is Baldor. He's located on 130 Eastern Ave in Chelsea. He's also located in industrial area surrounded totally by warehouses. Again, no impact on residents. The New England Produce Center has more than 40 produce distributors that have no proximity to homes. Finally, KM, boarded by the Tobin Bridge, snipped fresh produce, a truck repair business across, and office buildings, all farther than 300 feet from the KM plant. So it should be noted that none of these businesses even process fish, which makes this amendment even all the more important. The city zoning code of Chelsea specifically states in Article 2, defining an industrial district as "The purpose of the I district is to provide research, manufacturing, wholesaling, and related distribution activities in locations with suitable access and where such activities can occur without an adverse impact upon residential areas." Chelsea already has one of the highest asthma rates in the state. We cannot afford to aggravate the situation even further. Every single council member said at the previous council meeting, not in my neighborhood, every single one of them agreed. So I'm a little confused by the opposition to this amendment. I can't imagine why anyone would speak against a proposal that protects all residents of Chelsea. There is no us and them. That's not who we are, and that's not who we should be. It's all of us. We're in this together. Let's strive to improve the health and safety conditions for the entire community, from children all the way up to senior citizens. Please approve this amendment to protect the entire Chelsea community. Thank you.
Marchesa Cottone, 325 Commandant's Way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Chelsea is a living organism. It's vibrant, interconnected, and resilient. But what sets us apart is not just our diversity of people. It's the other concentration of industry woven throughout our neighborhoods. Chelsea has a fair higher percentage of industrial zones and facilities than nearly any nearby city or town, which is why we are recognized as an environmental justice community. This legacy means we bear a heavier burden, and that makes it even more critical to defend the health and well-being of every resident. When we talk about pollution and its impacts, we often think of what's easily measured: air quality, water contamination, traffic congestion. But we rarely stop to account for the strain that can be graphed on a chart, the noise that rattles us all night, the lights that spill through our windows, the everyday flood of trucks and activity that overwhelm our senses. And we never fully reckon with the emotional and mental toll it takes with how neighborhoods carry those heavy burdens home night after night. That's exactly what we faced at 100 Justin Drive. Our community, I see many of us here, you see them too, stood up against the fish processing plant, not because we were against the industry, but because we demanded fairness, accountability, and respect for the basic dignity of residential life. We fought for months against a proposal that threatened the silence our families need, the health our children deserve, and the peace we build together. And we did it without support from our own district councillor, a fight no Chelsea resident should ever have to wage alone. Tonight, you have a chance to transform that fight into lasting change. The zoning amendment, thank you councillor, would prohibit anything of the sort within 300 feet of any home. It's not just a technical fix. It's a restoration of transparency, balance, and fairness in the zoning framework. It's an affirmation that Chelsea stays strong, diverse, and economically, economically active without sacrificing our residents' wellness for unchecked development. This is about community impact, about trucks roaring all hours, about orders drifting over playgrounds, about the intangible but also real disruptions of daily life. It's about ensuring that Chelsea's growth is planned for everyone and that the city council stands with its people to protect our neighborhoods. Industry will probably always be part of our story, but so should compassion and vision. Yes, let's not force another district, another block, another family to shoulder the fight that we survived. Let's pass this amendment, and in doing so, show what accountable, engaged city government really looks like. Chelsea can be a place where business and home live in harmony. With your leadership, it will be. Thank you.
Nicholas Gregoretti, 65 Breakwater Drive. Thanks, Ricky. Ah, that's much better. Nicholas Gregoretti, 65 Breakwater Drive. I'm here tonight as a private citizen, not in any connection with any political campaign. First, I want to thank the planning board for your time and for hearing from the community. Many of us have followed this issue very closely, studying ordinance, reviewing public records, and speaking with neighbors because we care deeply about how Chelsea grows. The zoning amendment isn't about stopping growth. It's about responsible growth, development that's transparent, consistent, and aligned with the city's long-term vision. One of the clearest statements of that vision is the Chelsea Creek Municipal Harbor Plan, published in 2022, with a 10-year life, 10-year term, and developed in part by Fidel Maltese, John De Priest, Leo Robinson, Hugle Pardomo, and Roseanne Bon Giovanni of Greenroots. The plan recognizes the need to balance industry with community well-being. It specifically identifies certain uses as inherently incompatible with seafood and meat processing operations. It says, "Hotels, motels, nursing homes, hospitals, and recreational boating facilities are categorically excluded from eligibility as supporting designated port area uses, and a direct zoning to preclude residential development that is incompatible with the industrial character of the area." That principle isn't limited to the DPA boundary. It's a broader recognition that processors and rural populations simply cannot safely coexist. So why did we try to do the opposite at 100 Justin Drive? There are sensitive community uses on every side: Mary O'Malley Park, more than 1,000 residential units, a recreational boating marina, and the Leonard Florence Center for Living, the world-renowned center for treating ALS patients. The harbor plan itself warns against exactly this type of adjacency. The amendment before you tonight is, in many ways, the practical application of those same harbor plan principles. Both share a common goal: to guide development in a way that's sustainable, predictable, and protective of public health and quality of life. The harbor plan sets out the vision. The amendment provides the mechanism to make that vision real. By clarifying where high-impact industrial uses can go and cannot go, this amendment establishes a safe buffer zones our neighborhoods need. Boundaries that allow economic activity to flourish while shielding nearby residents, parks, and community institutions from noise, odor, and heavy traffic. It's a framework that supports sustainable growth as Chelsea continues to evolve, growth that adds jobs and investment in appropriate areas while maintaining livable, healthy, and vibrant neighborhoods throughout the city. We talk a lot about environmental justice, and this is exactly what this looks like in practice. Chelsea can continue to attract businesses and development while ensuring that no one community bears a disproportionate burden. The two ideas, economic vitality and public health, they're not in conflict. They are part of the same responsible vision for Chelsea's future. And finally, this is about trust and transparency. Residents have spent months researching, engaging, and showing up because they believe in this city and its potential. When zoning decisions clear planning standards, like those in the harbor plan, it restores confidence that decisions are made fairly, with foresight, and with, with respect for everyone involved. So tonight, I stand in support of this zoning amendment. It is fair. It is balanced. And it aligns with Chelsea's policies and with its principles. It allows for sustainable growth while protecting the people and places that define who we are, a diverse, resilient, and forward-looking community. To advocate for our own health, safety, and well-being is not to be privileged. It is to be human. Thank you.
My name is Yusi Dafawa, and I live at 53 Breakwater Drive. I own multiple properties in Chelsea. So when I advocate, I advocate for all of Chelsea. I support the recommendation by council for all the reasons mentioned here tonight. During this process, I learned a lot of stuff. And it would be unfair for me not to share what I have learned And it would be unfair for me not to share what I have learned during this process with the board. The first thing I learned was that there's already areas in Chelsea zoned for fish farming. When that was put to Boston Provision, they said they did visit those facilities. And they found some of those facilities acceptable, but for one reason: the ceilings were too low. Sorry, ceilings were too high. And if records were taken of all the meetings where they presented, that information would be found in the record. Something else I must share with the board which I learned during this process is that Boston Provision took members of various boards of Chelsea on a tour. They did not take any residents. And some of those board members were eager to come back and report, for example, that Boston Provision failed to sell, which is fair enough. But residents were not invited, not on any of the tours.
Sir, we really don't... I agree with Eric. You are being very specific. I want to talk about the proposal. I do not...
I...
I understand your concerns. I respect your concerns, but this...
With due respect, with due respect. I respect this board. I admire this board. I respect your time. I value your input. You know, I was given four minutes, and I've only spent one so far, and I'll only spend one more. The third thing, because the truth is upsetting to everyone. Change is upsetting to everyone. I'm a businessman. I understand Boston Provision's position because I'm a businessman. And I understand the board's position or some of the members of the board's position. The last thing I want to share with the board, since my time is limited, is that I've discovered that decisions are made according to the size of one's pocket. And that is something I reject because I'm a businessman. And I hate when I make decisions for people to attribute those decisions to the size of my pocket. Thank you.
All right, the next person that's going to talk, please grab the microphone from here. This is losing and it's causing static before he hear you. From here, please. Here, okay? Thank you. Here, right there. Don't touch the cable.
Yep, yep. Good evening. My name is Nicole McCoy. I live at 855 Broadway. And I've been in Chelsea my whole life, generations. Good evening, Chair, members of the planning board. A vote for this proposal amendment will have serious ripple effects on workforce development and upward mobility and threatens to distribute our economic ecosystem for unemployed residents in Chelsea. Along with seafood operations, these businesses are part of the economic ecosystem that sustains our restaurants, food vendors, and small grocers. If we make it harder for them to operate here, our local restaurants will feel it first. That means higher costs for small business owners, higher prices for customers, and less economic activity in the city already working hard to reradialize its downtown and waterfront districts, such as a restriction would not only hurt existing businesses but also limit new investments and job creation in Chelsea. Many of these companies provide stable, entry-level jobs with opportunities for training, advancement, and long-term career growth, exactly the kind of jobs that help families move from unemployment to stability. These companies employ local residents, often offer in sta... I'm sorry. Stable career terms. Many workers move up into management of logistic roles, gaining skills, and financial stability along the way. In addition, local seafood companies consistently reinvest in our community, sponsoring neighborhood events, supporting youth programs, and participating with workforce development initiatives that prepare residents for better-paying jobs. This amendment would close doors for people seeking opportunities, reduce the city's economic activity, and weaken the partnerships that have helped so many Chelsea residents achieve upward mobility. Our focus should be on balance protecting residents' quality of life by sustaining the industries that keep our companies working, our communities working, learning, and thriving. Beyond direct employment, these businesses reinvest in the community, supporting local events, donating to neighborhood initiatives, and partnering with workforce training programs that prepare residents for careers in logistics, management, and food services. They create a ladder for physical growth, promotions, and skill development for residents who often face barriers to employment. Restricting these operations will not only impact small businesses and consumers but would also close doors to economic opportunity, dispute pathways to self-sufficiency, and undetermine the city's ongoing efforts to create a stability and inclusive economic mobility for our most vulnerable at-risk residents. These jobs are a lifetime, a lifeline for residents facing displacement, food insecurities, and the daily stress of too few employment opportunities in our community. And I oppose this. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning board. Thank you for your time and expertise. I just want, on a side note, say this looks like how a board should be run. So thank you for that. First and foremost, I want to start with the... Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Joan Cromwell. I live at 38 Addison Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Chelsea, and that's the capacity I'm here today. First and foremost, the impact of this amendment has nothing to do with 100 Justin Drive or Admirals Hill in terms of job opportunity desert. They will not experience the impact and the barriers that it will create. This proposed amendment isn't just about zoning. It's about the future of Chelsea's economy, workforce, and ability to grow as a community. It not only is excessive, it's economically harmful, environmentally inconsistent, and fundamentally unjust to the majority of Chelsea people. Let us be clear. Chelsea has long faced real environmental burdens: from fuel, storage, and highway emissions, to industrial runoff and waste facilities, to dumping piles of hazardous debris containing asbestos, to lead, to salt, and to so many more hazardous air pollutants than fish odor. The environmental argument for this amendment does not hold up under scrutiny. To now single out a regulated seafood operation, which can be monitored, ventilated, and contained in modern technology, is inconsistent and unfair. The idea that fish odor poses greater harm than ongoing pollutants surrounding our city simply is not credible. The impact is manageable. The economic loss, however, would be devastating if this amendment is passed. The seafood industry provides more than jobs. It supports local nonprofits, food donations, and broader community initiatives. By contrast, this amendment concentrates economic power away from working-class neighborhoods and creates barriers for immigrants and minority residents who historically built Chelsea's economic foundation. Chelsea's unemployment rate is currently 5.5% higher than the state average. For a community where the average per capita income is about $42,000, these are exactly the kinds of opportunities that level the playing field. We cannot say we care about equity and economic justice while turning away this very industry that makes upward mobility possible. Let's be honest. The amendment was pushed because one neighborhood didn't want it. That very local preference is being turned into a citywide punishment locking all 1.8 square miles of Chelsea out of a vital economic opportunity. That's not community planning. It punishes every neighborhood for the preferences of a few and hurts the very people Chelsea claims to uplift. I'm going to skip to the end because you've heard it over and over again. And just to say that the amendment request, while it may be well-intentioned, would penalize working-class families and immigrant residents who rely on local jobs to support their households. It would effectively lock all Chelsea out of economic growth because one neighborhood's opposition. That's not equitable policy. That is not equitable policy. That is a setback for Chelsea residents striving for a better future. In closing, we talk often about community empowerment, inclusion, and opportunity. This is one of those moments to put those values into practice. Chelsea doesn't need barriers. We need balance.
Joan, excuse me.
I'm done? All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Svetlana Barber of 325 Commandant's Way. I just have one question. For all the 20 years that I lived in the United States, I never worked in the same city where I lived. We're constantly talking about jobs. Please do not talk about this because I can offer and I can promise everyone 25 jobs that I'm going to open in the next 10 years if I'm successful. If I'm not successful, I'm sorry. But these 100 jobs that are going to be opened in the next three years, there is no promises for this. The current jobs are not going to be offered to Chelsea. There's a few people that live in Chelsea. Like, this thing has to stop with the jobs. In New England, the data says that only 14% of people live in the same town that they work in. The people from Melrose, travel and commute to... I'm not going to give you examples. Is that a dream? Like, I'll be so happy if I can work over there and I live over there. That's not happening. I don't understand how Chelsea is going to be different. I don't understand the jobs issue that we keep talking about with this.
Hi, Calvin Brown, 300 Commandant's Way, Chelsea. City councillor, District 8, represent most of the folks here tonight. Again, I just appreciate the time the board members have been here. I usually don't speak in front of a lot of boards because we appoint you to do a job, and I thank you for the job that you do. I came here tonight to hear some residents talk about why we should have this recommendation that was put before us tonight. But I don't hear anything about that. I think it's more condoluted than what the resolution really means to say. I think that it wasn't taking time to really think out exactly how you wanted to present it for the board tonight. Again, the residents have come out and they come out and say things. And one thing I want to say to everyone here, the only reason why I'm really speaking is because the resolution, as it's written, it closed down opportunities for the city of Chelsea. And with the state of this nation, and not only this country, but our city is going to need to have opportunity. So this resolution, this recommendation, and when we voted for it at the city council members, we voted only that it would be looked at to see if it was something that we can use to move forward. The way it's written tonight, the way I hear it, the way the discussion I hear from it, it's not before, it should not go forward. Thank you.
Oh, God, this is a lot more scary up here. Hi, my name is Jalen Hissell. Proud second generation here in Chelsea. And I came here primarily to learn. I'm a proud product of the Chelsea Public School system. I've worked for the city of Chelsea for a long period of time. Sorry for the shaky voice. I'm just very nervous. But I primarily came here to learn. There's a lot of discussion base, and I wanted to come firsthand because a lot of the information that's been given has been over social media, has been hearsay, has been from other people's perspective. But a wise person told me, no, before no, which basically means I need to educate myself before I'm able to make a final decision. Chelsea, being born and raised here, you know, it's separated into three sections. There's Prattville, there's Chelsea, and then there's Admirals Hill. But all of it, everybody has really been saying impact, community. And I feel like it didn't really turn into a community up until this point. 300 feet, that's as big as a high school football field. I looked it up. Chelsea's very small, so 300 feet. I mean, part of an amendment is you're able to change what was already written. I don't want to discredit any homeowners that live in Admirals Hill. I have a lot of close friends that I consider family that live up in Admirals Hill. I'm also a homeowner myself, so I never want to discredit another fellow homeowner. But some of the things that I've learned so far has really been bullies, you know? And I feel like a lot of decisions have been made by personal instead of professional. A lot of these views and a lot of these viewpoints have been based off of emotion rather than research. I was hoping today that I would be able to get a little bit more data, a little bit more research. And unfortunately, it's really been based off of political view rather than an expectation from zoning. In total, I feel like an impact from the city of Chelsea and as a product of Chelsea High School, a lot of the opportunities are outside of the city rather than being in the city. We've been able to actually speak to the people that are kind of behind this, and a lot of it is based off of opportunity, not just for the residents in Chelsea that we hear regularly from city council meetings of how they need to be helped and the issues that they have about income. But I feel like a lot of the decisions are based from a section of Chelsea, not just as an entire community of Chelsea. Community of Chelsea, it's where united. And I feel like during this whole entire experience, I feel like that hasn't been the case. I feel like a lot of people have been persuaded just based off of, you know, other people's opinions rather than facts. And then lastly, I kind of wanted to say, as far as Greenroots goes, Greenroots literally is the epitome, thank you, is the epitome of kind of what is safe for our environment. And if they don't have really any concerns based off of, you know, this project, then I don't really fully understand. And lastly, as far as all of Chelsea, all of Chelsea is the whole entire zip code off of 02150. And I feel like tonight, or based off of this project, I feel like that hasn't really been heard overall. Thank you.
Let me make sure I'm holding this by the right place. Because I know if that door opens, I know I'm in trouble. Good evening. My name is Hamza Abdul, and I live in 641 Washington Ave. You would have thought I majored in business with how well I've been minding my business this past couple of months while this whole conversation has been going on. But as Jalen said, and some of the things that we heard today, seeing a lot of it just come up on social media, people I grew up with advocating for it, some against it, it really made me curious. Same thing as Jalen said, right? It made me curious. Let me start having some of these conversations with friends that are for it, friends that are against it. So yes, I grew up in Chelsea, went to all the Chelsea public schools. And I can proudly say I am Chelsea. So when I'm speaking about this, I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of the young adults that normally don't get the chance to be in this room to speak up on that behalf. So curiosity actually brought me into... Man, I had to have a conversation with myself. Did I... The mic is still good? So I had to have a conversation with myself on a... Without being biased, because at first I'm like Wolf Fish, Fish Plants. I didn't know what any of that meant. Instantly, I was like, not a fan of the... Not a fan of seafood. I don't like the smell of fish. Instantly, I was like, no. But I didn't know anything about the company. Based on all the conversations I was having, I was left exactly where Jalen said. Still, I'm unsure. So the day of, I think like a few weeks ago, one of the hearings, I was curious, I walked over to Seaport, where Wolf is located. Now, here's what blew my mind. I'm walking to this company, walking past all of these restaurants that I cannot afford to take my wife. A lot of these high-end buildings, right? And as we know, Seaport is known as a very high-end area. Walking over there, and then I take a left to see where Wolf Fish is located, see a lot of different companies. Instantly, I smell it, right? I'm like, man, this is what everyone is against. So I wanted to make a U-turn, go back to my office. But instead, I was like, let me just go there. Went up, got to meet one of the... Went up, got to meet one of the people that were working there, and I said, hey, I'm from Chelsea, I just wanted to understand about your company a little bit more, and I was hoping if there's somebody over here that can, you know, show me around. And they said I was the first resident that was curious, that actually took them up on that offer, outside of other counselors. So this amendment to me blows my mind because we're saying, hey, this is about a community, this is about Chelsea. So instantly, I could say, you know what, I'm not really a fan, what's it called? I'm a fan of it because I don't need that opportunity, right? But truthfully speaking, as it was told earlier, it's bigger than that. They have a marketing company, they have a sales team, and I got to see everything. I got to see both halves of it. I also got to see the trucks that, the trucks that they would be bringing in, the vans that they would be bringing in. So a lot of that curiosity, I was like, man, okay, so as for jobs, we may not need that job because of the position we're in, but we're taking this away from a family and a young adult that it could positively affect in the future, especially starting with 60K, right? So this isn't about, oh, hey, you know what, I wouldn't work in the city that I'm in because I grew up in here and I worked at the Boys and Girls Club that's located here and that's who I am, right? So this opportunity, passing this, actually takes away a lot more than we'd actually be provided, and so I am against it. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm going to be very quick. I'm going to be very quick. My name is Debra Zabat. I live at 375 Broadway. I am surrounded on three sides by construction that has been going on for over a year. I'm against the amendment because the community that's here, the people that are here keep saying it is for all of Chelsea, but I don't see anybody from other communities with them. And if it was for all of Chelsea and there was the research done and the networking done, I would expect other neighborhoods to be here to either speak against or for the amendment, so I'm voting, I would just say I'm against it. Thank you.
And real quick, this, we do have buffer zones right now on record, 500 feet for every marijuana facility. So there is a buffer zone for marijuana to be not within 500 feet of a school. And yet, somehow, they managed to be locating four or five operations in the city of Chelsea. This would not eliminate this use in our city. It would simply say you cannot locate within 300 feet of an industrial, of a residential use. I think that's a fair compromise to allowing this, the whatever proposed economic benefits, and one can discuss the pros and cons of it all, but it would allow it and still be, you know, just not negatively impact. And I believe there will be a negative impact. I also grew up in Chelsea and I had to see and work on lots of conflicts. You have to really understand this sort of use that brought this all up is because it's the border that we're worried about. Those sites that are adjacent to, and that's where initial, in proper master planning, you would have industrial use, some commercial office, maybe business, and then residential. You wouldn't put industrial next to residential for this very reason of these conflicts. However, history of Chelsea development is what it is and working backwards. You can more than welcome any prohibition of anything that is environmentally, you know, dangerous and so forth, but you still have all the uses grandfathered in. So go ahead and do it, but we're still working with past sins. So I would ask you to support this. They stole my thunder because I was talking about Balldor. Balldor isn't just a similar company, it is their competitor. And Balldor has been in this city for 10-plus years. They've located three different times, Second Street, Spruce, and then they built their facility on Eastern Avenue. And no one said peep because that is an example of proper location of that type of business. This whole neighborhood just came out and said, look, you can have it, but it's not right adjacent to residential. And I don't think that's so hard to comprehend. And this blowback, as someone who's worked and lived in Chelsea, could have all been avoided had, when the city manager met with the proponents and said, I will propose this in front of the city council, but let me check with the neighborhood first. If that had happened, this would not have happened. We would have avoided all this, but that didn't happen and that's why we have this. So this amendment fixes what should have happened when, when the city manager sat down with the proponents originally, before he sent it to the city council. And thankfully, the city council is acting properly. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to grab it because I'm too short. Hi, my name's Teneri Garcia. I am not from Admiral's Hill, I'm from District 4, 135 Washington Ave. I get it, I really do. The city wants to protect and preserve our longstanding industrial businesses. That's fair. But let's be honest, that's not what this is really about. The language about welcoming more feels like we're bending over backwards for one specific, very specific business in one very specific spot. And I want to say clearly, I agree with the amendment counselor, Manoj Perpul, because it's about doing what's right, not what's convenient. It's about fairness and accountability. What's frustrating and honestly disheartening is how this administration is treating the people who are speaking up. It feels like those opposing this project are being treated as a nuisance, like the voices of 950-plus residents, taxpayers, and families don't matter. That's unacceptable. That's not okay. That's not leadership. Now, let's talk about these jobs. Yes, jobs. Jobs matter. They always do. But these jobs aren't guaranteed. This isn't a new opportunity. This is a company moving its existing workers here. That's not economic growth for Chelsea. That's relocation, plain and simple. And this is not about a fishy smell. This is about trust. It's about the promises that might not be kept and the people who will pay the price when that happens. Because when the dust settles, it's us, the residents, the families, the people who breathe this air and love this city, who are left dealing with the consequences. And side note, the waterfront isn't a pier, it's not a landing spot for more industry. It's part of who we are as a community and it deserves respect. So no, this isn't progress. Real progress doesn't silence voices. Real progress stands with the people, not over them. Thank you.
So we mentioned the community part, and I guess the question I have, and I really want to just shout out to the residents because they have a lot of decorum today, and that hasn't been the case in previous meetings, so I do want to give that due respect, that they have great decorum at this particular meeting, because in previous meetings, it's impacted the votes of the panels that they've been in front of. That's the one thing. And the second thing is that this is an industrial area, so there are going to be trucks in there regardless to who moves in there and what's going to be going in and out of there. I'm not sure how many bay doors there are, but at the end of the day, when we keep talking about trucks, I'm curious, is it that no company can go in there because any company that goes in there is gonna have trucks?
Again, this is about the amendment, not about, you guys, you keep going back to the fishing plant. This is about the amendment, not, I, I, I've been listening to this for two hours, I appreciate this, we've all heard this, but again, it's about the amendment. I'm not speaking for the fish company, I don't care if they have 500 docks.
I don't care about the, it's not about the fish company, ma'am. So with the amendment, I guess my question is, with this amendment in, in any particular area, does that impact the number of trucks that are being used? Because that's what I'm trying to understand, a 300-foot buffer?
The amendment has nothing to do with trucks or transportation of any kind.
Understood, sir.
You can read it yourself and make that conclusion on your own.
Nope, I read it, understood. I just, my apologies. I keep hearing trucks and I was just curious about that. My apologies. Thank you.
John Burns, 31 Kimball Road, Chelsea. I can be terse, but I don't know that I can be pithy, so bear with me. Thank you all for the wonderful discussion earlier on the board. I really liked the questions that were asked, I liked the thoughtful nature of the discussion. What I wanted to bring up, I'm not particularly fond of this amendment, was not terribly fond of the initial zoning that brought it there either, but what I worry about is the conflict between housing and industry. We have industrial zones in the city, we are expanding the housing in the city, and as you can see, when you build housing next to an industrial plant, you have conflict in the future. And how do we plan around managing this? We just passed the MBTA Communities Act zoning at the end of last year, if I recall correctly. On the map that was shown earlier, that overlays the largest section of blue on the map over to the left. That overlays quite a substantial amount of that. So when we start to build housing in that area, now all of a sudden, more areas are going to be restricted for, for that sort of uses. You know, another topic, another, another thought is, you know, the market basket next to the commuter rail is probably close to 300 feet from the nearest residential area at this point, and I think they dispose of a whole lot of waste out back and, you know, I don't hear that many complaints or smell too many things there. Thank you.
Todd Taylor, 45 Nichols Street, City Counselor for Pratt, for Prattville. I basically came here tonight for two reasons. One, I wanted to hear more information about what this amendment was actually gonna mean. So not just for the, not just for Justin Drive, but for the rest of Chelsea, and I think that that's really important that we, when we, when we make zoning amendments, that they're carefully thought out and crafted and not a knee-jerk reaction to something that people don't like. I don't think that's how the city of Chelsea should do business. I, I, I think that the, what the residents want in their neighborhood matters. I think that, you know, maybe there should have been discussions earlier about, about what was happening, but the way things work is that, you know, things get published in the paper and, you know, people have to pay attention to what's going on and come to the meetings and when there's a public hearing and nobody shows up for the public hearing, that's, that's, that's a problem. So, look, the other thing that I wanted to clear up was a bit of misinformation. I've seen it in social media, somebody said it tonight, that, you know, all, all 11 city counselors were for this and that's why they voted to send it to you. Nothing could be further from the truth. The vote that was taken was a procedural vote to give this an airing, to see what this actually is going to mean. Now, I didn't get the information tonight that I was actually looking for. We had a partial, you know, information, but I think this needs to be a lot better vetted. I'm not gonna make a decision on this until I have more information. So I mean, I think that, I think that we, we need a lot more information about how this amendment is, is really going to affect the rest of the industrial areas. One thing that I can say is, we need economic development in this city. We, we need a lot, this is a poor city, okay? Some people may want to keep it poor because that's, that's where their interests are, but I want to take the people that live here that are poor and not replace them with other people. I want to lift them up and make poor people middle-class people so that they can actually afford, they don't have to stand in food lines because of it. That is important, and, and by doing stuff like this, it makes our job of economic development a lot harder. And so, and, and therefore keeping Chelsea a lot more poor. And, and that's what we're trying to change. Those are the kinds of changes we want to bring to Chelsea. So think about what we're doing, how we should do it, okay? We want to do things the right way. We do want to be just to people. We, we do want to give the, the residents an airing. As far as notice goes, maybe we do need to think about, you know, trying to change the laws that dictate who gets notified, right? So maybe that's a conversation we can have, but this thing like, oh, this was an inside deal because, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't. So, you know, I just want to clear up any misconception at home. The city council sent this to you not because we all agreed with it. It may come back to the city council and the city council votes it down, but I'm telling you, this was a procedural vote to get the information. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board and fellow residents here this evening. My name is Marnie McAlpine. I live at 20 Franklin Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking today, just wanted to hear everybody's take on this. I would take great pause with any sort of approval of this amendment based upon what I've heard tonight. As Will stated at the beginning of the meeting, he was referencing the negative impacts of buffer zoning or when buffer zoning is bad. And one of the things that he stated was when it appears to be being done for a targeted reason, and that's all I heard tonight, was a targeted reason, which gives me great pause in making a decision on something because that's exactly what we are not supposed to do. Now, that's not to say that there, there may be a better version of the amendment where one of the subjects that was brought up this evening was talking about various things of pollutants that we don't want in our neighborhoods, worried about our air. So maybe what needs to be done is take this amendment, and respectfully, counselor, I would ask you to consider withdrawing this amendment and working with our city to look at the industrial zoning and what would be conducive to a more successful and thriving industrial, industry for our community? And if we need to put an amendment in place for buffer zoning, looking at something that isn't so targeted and that maybe we're, we're looking at numerous industries that we want to have a buffer zone for rather than coming up with an amendment immediately after we have had this hot topic of conversation all summer and trying to do targeted zoning, which is exactly what we are not supposed to do. So because of that reason, I am fully in opposition of this order before you this evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyle. You remember, I'm from 30 Addison Street. I actually had encounters with buffer zones. For a year and a half, I fought or fought with the city council to adjust the buffer zone around marijuana dispensaries within the 500 feet. So I have a lot of experience with this issue. Due to that buffer zone, myself as a Chelsea resident and individual in the community could not, could not economically thrive in this city. Now, that is marijuana, that is not fish, that is a drug or however you may call it, however you may claim it. And due to what the previous buffer zone was, we fought for a year and a half, lost more than a million dollars, lost more than a million dollars. lost more than a million dollars because of a buffer zone. Now, I did understand the issue leading up to that, preceding that, right? It's marijuana. It's different. If this was the case because of what seems to be a personal issue rather than this precedent or a targeted issue, I would be very angered by that as a citizen in this community. I also will go to say that this decision does not affect one hundred Justin Drive. So, if this decision didn't, if that was known before, would the same crowd be here? I can't say that. This would not be the case. And this decision won't affect that. Now, with that being said, again, if I stood here and we knew that, this meeting would be done two hours ago. This situation would not be handled or dealt with, and it would be over. I don't appreciate the law that, the amendment that was put forward, listening to the meeting online, poorly worded, clearly targeting and identifying one business, not handling an issue and not statistically proving to, not statistically providing a foundation or basis to depend upon, but very much just targeted decision. And it feels like it was driven for whatever the reason or case may be. But again, as an individual who fought this for two years, a buffer zone, five-hundred-foot buffer zone from the schools, as Royal Alvinada said it before, I sat with the city council two years in a row dealing with that, week in and week out, meeting after meeting. And that was because of marijuana. If that was the case because individuals in one portion or part of the city were angered that a fish factory was coming into place, that is an issue and that is a problem. You can look up the records. I believe it was in two thousand twenty-three, we rezoned it, myself and Olaboyodi. So, I have personal relationship with this situation. I know exactly what we're dealing with here. And this is not an issue that proceeds or causes any type of foundation to build upon. Thank you.
All right. So, I was reading through the state law, and the board can choose to make a recommendation to council tonight. They can also choose to continue the public hearing to the next meeting for more information as well. So, to a date certain, so just...
I am pretty opposed to continuing to future session.
Can I ask a quick question on the wording before we decide? Would distribution include sales or retail sales, or would that have, have to be?
Oh, that's a good question.
Because, because if that could include retail sales, then we're talking about like market basket, potentially like supermarket compare. It's, it's very broad.
Yeah, it's a problem with the language in here as well. It's very broad. It's very broadly written. It encompasses more than we probably even imagined. You have the word distribution. You have the word loading in there that isn't, isn't specific enough. We're already, I mean, before we even got into our public discussion, the actual wording of this particular amendment is problematic in its broadness.
It, it is utilizing the same like use category language we have for a use like this. The question around, does distribution include sort of like retail and kind of sales in that nature? I mean, probably comes down to interpretation, but I, I believe if it included that, it would have said seafood like retail.
To that end, though, I think that's probably one of the flaws in this language right here, is there is some ambiguity cooked right into as it's written right now, not, you know, compounded by the fact that even if we just take it at face value by the plain text of things, we don't really even have the information before this board right now to understand what the impact will be of this. We don't know what properties are affected or could be with, you know, with what some of the future planning holds. So, you know, I, I just don't think that we have anywhere near the kind of information we need to make a sweeping proclamation like this.
Also, speaking of the master plan, there's a lot of work about what they're gonna do with market basket and all that kind of stuff. And we're talking, three hundred feet is a lot. So, and again, I am personally offended that this is so targeted to one corporation. I think that is not something that Chelsea should do. We are supposed to be embracing companies. We're not supposed to be putting them out and throwing them under the bus, even if we disagree with them. And, you know, I was probably one of the only few people who wanted King Arthur to survive. I mean, and, and Matt hit the bullet. So, you know, so, yeah, I find this amendment so targeted and so not what Chelsea should be and is. And also, with the master plan coming in and all the ideas of what we want, want to do, there's, there's no, yeah. And it's, and even if this is passed, it, it may or may not stop the distribution. And if they do come, God bless them, because they're coming into a hostile environment. So, anyway, but I'm totally against this amendment.
I, I just want to say some, something real quick, because, you know, I get it. You know, we all have mixed emotion here. You know, we have people that are for it, and there's people that are against it, you know? And this is what we're, you know, what other councillors are saying, you know, coming in here for public meetings, because it's important for us to hear what is the values and opinions to understand. You know, right now, it's like, what, some, like we're all saying, I think we're moving too fast. I personally think my recommendation should be, we should take a look before we make any decision and move forward. Because maybe we could take a look at it, what's the pros and cons? Maybe we can adjust something else. I don't think it's really important for us to, or actually really appropriate for us to just make a motion right away, rather than before we can just make sure we're sticking to facts before we can make a decision.
Point, point order, though, Christian, on this particular issue, this is, this is an amendment. So, in order to change the language of it, it has to go back to city council. And they have to change the, the, the language and send it back to us.
Exactly.
So, we need, we do need to vote this down if we want the language to change in order for it to be amended after the fact. And they can, they can put another proposal before us.
Yeah, because we want to make sure like we're making the right decision. You know, there's a lot of mixed feelings, and I think we need to make sure we have the right decision so everyone can be a green on.
Also, like, this entire conversation on section thirty-four seven-eight, it's a fantastic conversation. And it's a great opportunity for city council to improve all of Chelsea as opposed to just tasing a single community. We should update thirty, thirty-four seven-eight and include other, other, plenty of other industries. I typed it up on ChatGPT because it's easiest. And there's plenty of great other industries to include here, like fuel storage, chemical manufacturing, asphalt plants, which can easily come to Chelsea because all of the construction going on. Like, this is extremely short-sighted, and it seems like an eighth grader typed it up. Think more broadly about improving Chelsea and not targeting a specific project, please.
I would like to propose an amendment that we, we, I want to propose an amendment that we vote no to the amendment. And let's see what it does. I say no.
I agree. I'll second it.
I'd like to just say something, big picture, thinking very broadly here. I was involved with the Friends of the Harbor Walk, which helped improve forty-four miles of coastline for Boston Harbor. Every other community that faces Boston Harbor really treasures their waterfront. And we have more designated port area than any other section of the harbor. I'm looking at our coastline is probably about, I don't know, seven-eighths of our access to the waterfront, which is a treasure, is already spoken for. And that's not going to change in our lifetime.
Sarah, excuse me. There is a motion on, that's been made and seconded, and it's on the floor, and we must vote on that motion. Although you, you can have, we can have further discussion on the motion, even though it's been made and seconded. So, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you.
Can I reject that motion and continue?
The motion was to...
Okay, I just want to just finish clarifying. The state park that we have at Admiral's Hill is already spoken for. So, we have such precious segments of, call it developable waterfront or sections of the waterfront that the public will ever be able to access. So, you know, I think we should be very strategic about how we use those parcels. And I think we should be more insistent that uses within the designated port area are water-dependent. So that we're not having to accept uses that really belong on the waterfront into other industrial zones that are just inappropriate match. I, I just think we need to be more strategic. And I believe that this language will actually squelch the potential of how we may develop within the designated port area. So, I am not in favor of this amendment.
Anybody else have comments about the amendment that is on the floor?
I just, I just want to make sure that I'm gonna vote correctly. So, based on the motion that was made...
The motion was made, as I understand it, was to vote no on the...
So, if I vote yes, it is against this.
It's to support the motion.
You vote no, say...
Which is to say no.
Yes, and I also just want to add that, you know, your recommend, this is a recommendation to council. As part of your recommendation, it can be to relook at this, change the language, you know, et cetera. But so...
We'll amend our proposal, then, that, that we can, that this can go back to city council to consider rewording it or rethinking this through if they wish to make another proposal to us after the fact.
I second it.
There, there was a motion put on the floor and seconded. I think a vote needs to happen for that motion first.
Okay, I'll withdraw my emotion. Oh, my God, let's just vote. We're missing the baseball game. We're missing the baseball game. Excuse me, and the Dodgers are winning.
So, the proposal is on the floor to vote no on this particular proposal as it stands, as it's written, with the option for city council to be able to review and reword if they so desire and repropose at another time.
Yes.
I second it.
Discussion?
You can, it can still be, it can be, it can be, it can be voted on only, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to pose, just to let you know.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, there's still one more thing. It's a procedural, essentially a procedural task. The owners of one hundred Justin Drive submitted a... Can I just go? Yeah, yeah. The owners of... Yeah, it's, this is just a procedural task of the board.
Technical technicality which has, which we're not gonna vote on and are not required to. Go ahead, you, you tell.
Yeah, so, the owners of one hundred Justin Drive submitted an approval-not-required plan to merge Lot Two, Lot Two A, and Lot E at one hundred Justin Drive into one large contiguous lot. Again, this is kind of purely an administrative procedural task by the board. As long as they meet the three criteria as outlined by Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one M of Mass General Law. The three criteria are that they have frontage on a public way, which they do. They meet the minimum frontage requirements for the zoning districts. They well exceed the minimum frontage requirements for both the industrial and the Naval Hospital Commercial District that this property lies within, and vital access to the lot does exist. So, the board just has to confirm that these, this criteria is met. The department reviewed this plan. I have the plan here. So, we just need to kind of confirm that and then sign the plan, and they can merge their lot.
So, we need a motion to confirm.
I'll make the motion to confirm. Sounds like it is what it is.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
I, I motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Wait.
I motion to adjourn?
Oh, I wanted to like propose, I say, general thing to city council. I think transparency in these public forums is super important. And a screen facing us that isn't facing our audience isn't transparent at all. So, could we please put forward some kind of motion to city council seeking funding for like a projector or a second screen facing the other direction? I'm not sure if there's like a formal process there, so I'm looking at Will, but... Okay.
I can look into that.
Great. I'd appreciate it.
Lastly, I would like to just thank all the public for taking your time to come out and speak on, speak on public matters. Thank you all.
Can I second the motion?
I second the adjournment.